Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. It is Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, 7:00 PM. First thing we're going to do is pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, every and just for all. Next, I'd like to just acknowledge one condolence on behalf of the town council. The passing of Robert S. Williams. On his passing on May 27th, 2021. Mr. Williams served in the United States Army during the Vietnam War. Next, now take a moment of silence in honor of all those veterans and first responders who have passed. Okay, as a reminder, this meeting is being aired live and recorded pursuant to the Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Facebook Live. Moving on to approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Meeting minutes from May 25th, 2021, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions, Counselor George?
None.
Any comments, Counselor Souza?
No, sir.
I just would like to make a brief amendment to the minutes as I noticed Counselor George's amendment at the last meeting is not recorded in the minutes. As having stricken the last sentence of the last paragraph, now therefore it be resolved.
The move with.
Right. Okay, all those in favor, roll call vote.
Hey, Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry? Dr. Perry?
Connecting, yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Russian?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colm Botes?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Moving on, announcements from the president, there are none. C, proclamations, there are none. D, citizens' open forum. Any citizens wishing to speak, you may do so. Try to keep it under three minutes if you could state your name and your street for the record, please. And I'm going to see, I see Sam Baumgarten.
Sam Baumgarten, 60 Short Street. I remembered this time to say that first. Like a few others here, we are bouncing back and forth between this meeting and our BCCR monthly meeting. So some of us will be coming and going. But I wanted to make sure to appear tonight and thank all the counselors again for your support of the pride flag resolution and the raising of the flag yesterday. And thank the town manager and assistant town manager as well. I think everyone who was there agreed it was one of the best days we've had in Bridgewater in a long time. Very powerful and sets the stage for future developments in diversity, equity, and inclusion. So thank you again for all that support and your presence.
Thank you, Sam. Jill?
Hi there, how are you? Jill Sheridan, Pleasant Street. I'm so happy about the pride flag. I feel like it's such a great move for Bridgewater to be moving in the direction of diversity and inclusion. I was wondering, and I wasn't aware when they first talked about the flag raising, that it was only going to be flown for a week during Pride Month. Is it possible to fly it the whole month?
Okay, so Jill, you can, the council's not going to entertain answering the questions, but I will follow up with you after the meeting if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, because I just feel like it's kind of, you know, Pride Month is, it's a big event in the LGBTQIA community. And for Bridgewater to like move towards diversity and inclusion, for it to just be one week during the month is a little bit of a gut punch. So I'm hoping that we can just like, you know, I'm not part of the committee to have the flag flown in the first place, but I do feel like we should consider just, you know, keeping it up the whole month. Just to really show our commitment to diversity and inclusion. Because I feel like if I was an LGBTQIA person living in town, if it was just one week and then it was taken down, I would, I personally would feel slighted. So, you know, just I don't object my own opinions onto it, but um, yeah, let's fly it the whole month. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Thanks.
Any other citizens wishing to speak?
Could I speak as well, please?
Sure, Vernon, go ahead.
Vernon Domingo, 36 Saddle Drive. I want to commend the council for its wonderful turnout and support. It was a fantastic success, I think, and that's the way to go. I think we did it in an intelligent manner. The speakers were great, and I think we've made a mark in southeast Massachusetts. I suspect that other towns may follow our lead and see that this is possible to do in a really good and strong, forward-looking way. So thank you greatly for, to the town council for making sure that this happened in a really forthright manner. For making sure that the timing was there, so I'm very, very pleased with that. And support from everybody was overwhelming, from the town manager, from everybody else, from the university and so on. So it was a great success, so thank you to all of you. My own sense, just to respond to the question about raising it, the original decision was for one week. And I, my sense is that this is just a start and that that issue of raising it towards a month could be done next year. Because this is an ongoing issue, it doesn't just stop, but it can be done, I think, if we put enough pressure for a whole month, but next year. I think it may be too late to change that timeframe right now, it's up to council, but.
No, if we have time, just leave it up.
Jill, Jill, not appropriate. Thank you. It's not appropriate for members of the community to debate during the town council meeting. Please respect the speaker and the council in the process and wait to the end. You've been provided an opportunity to speak with me directly via email after the meeting. Appreciate if you hold to that. Vernon, do you have anything else to add?
No, I just want to again, thank you very much. It was for the community, for me and my family, as you could see, I was a parent of a transgender son. It was a wonderful event, it'll stand in history, so thank you.
Vernon, thank you, and thank you to your group for all that you did to make that possible. Is there any other members of the community that would wish us to speak?
I would like to speak.
Good, Mrs. Rogan, go ahead.
Hi, Jennifer Rogan, 36 Howard Street. I just wanted to commend the town and everyone involved on the progress pride flag that was raised yesterday. It makes me super proud to be a resident here. And I also, not just, I would also like to say that I think it would be great if it were up indefinitely, not even just for a month, but indefinitely. And just thank you all for what you do, that's it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other members of the community wishes to speak, Ms. Domingo?
Hi, I'm Gerald Domingo, Saddle Drive, Bridgewater, and I want to just add my thanks, my heartfelt thanks to the council of Bridgewater for firstly, for putting forward the resolution that we play the flag, raise the flag and for coming through and doing it, voting unanimously for it. And the pride flag stands for inclusivity, it's a welcoming sign. My son today, when he was on his way to New York, he said, let's drive by the town hall so I can see that flag again. We went, we went east into town and back again west to get to Providence to the train station. That's what it means. He was just taking pictures and videos of it as we were driving by, and that's what's going to happen with every person of the LGBTQ community, allies of the LGBTQ community. When they pass that flag pole and see that flag flying, they're going to feel so good and so welcomed. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to speak during citizens' open forum?
Mr. Russian, could I speak?
Sure, just state your name and your street address, not the address, but just the street.
Sure, Jennifer Smith, Foxer Lane. I'm just calling again to voice my oppositions to the pot shops in Bridgewater. I am hoping that we have enough counselors with courage tonight to do the right thing and keep the ban in place. I understand this easy option is out of my hands, but it is in yours. The future of Bridgewater is in your hands now. You must protect the children and families of this community first. I would think this would be an easy decision for all of you. To me, it's pretty simple. You have the ability to make a difference here tonight and leave your mark on this community. Hopefully, you will leave Bridgewater a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I'd like to speak as well, Taylor Sullivan, 250 Nolan Park.
Go ahead, Mrs. Sullivan.
Hi, so I'm here again as a member of Bridgewater Cares, speaking out against having retail marijuana shops in town. Profit for addiction is no way to fund a town. You know, like many of you counselors know, marijuana is in fact a gateway drug. Actually, hearing the Domingos speak just now, you know, again, totally unrelated to marijuana, but just speaking about their son, it's very heartwarming. And it's great that you all made a decision that is, you know, affects that family personally. So I would ask you also, on a totally different tangent, to support families that have suffered as a result of drug abuse and who have suffered as a result of marijuana being a gateway drug. I think this is all an easy decision for you all to make, would be to, you know, uphold the ban and not try to reverse it as Counselor Wood has been trying to do for several years. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Any other citizens for citizens' open forum that wish to speak? Josh, do you see any hands raised? I do not see anything on my screen.
I do not.
I would like to speak just quickly. I just, I'll just throw my voice in, sorry, Jeff Daniels at Maple Avenue. Just in opposition also to the marijuana, I've spoken before. The irony is last time I had brought up the increased childhood deaths and both vehicular related as well as related to accessing the drugs themselves in locations where retail marijuana exists. And it was funny because just today, not funny, but just, just a few minutes ago, actually, my wife and I and my brand new son were driven off the side of the road from somebody who pulled out of the Lakeville retail shop, who wasn't paying attention. They just pulled out, and so we had to get on the brakes and off into the side of the road, sorry, Middleborough Panacea retail shop. So like, that's something that's expected, people are going to be driving vehicles more often. After leaving the stores high, that sort of thing. I just don't think that it's right for our community. I don't think it's what's good for our kids, and even though some people may be able to be responsible with it, there are those who it will ultimately lead to a pathway of addiction and and lost life, and there is research to back that up. I just hope that you guys will take that seriously and maybe turn your attention to other matters that could help build Bridgewater rather than focusing on retail marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels.
Man, I do see Janet, is her hand raised?
Okay, go ahead, Janet.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. Once again, just want to urge the town council to not approve the resolution and proceed any further with allowing retail shops in marijuana. I have spoken many times before and sent letters, so you all hopefully know my stance at this point. I just, it's just, just, I just have that old saying of just because everybody's doing it doesn't mean we have to. And Mr. Wood has pointed out several times that it's only eight miles from.
Mrs. Mrs. Hanson, I'm not going to entertain conversations where we're directly calling out members of the town council. Please speak, speak to it without mentioning Mr. Wood, please.
Okay, it's been mentioned that there's several in other different towns. It's not a hardship for anybody to drive to another town to obtain it. The carrot dangled in front of us is always saying, we're going to get tax dollars. Yes, we're going to get some tax dollars, it may not be the profit that we're saying, but it's definitely not going to be the savior of the town. At what expense are we going to have tax dollars? There's a sign at this high school, old high school that says drug-free zone, yet we're going to support the schools with drugs. It's hypocritical. So I just urge, I just want to again say, I urge that everybody votes no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Is there anyone else wishing to speak, citizens' open forum?
Man, I have Joe with his hand raised.
Okay, I would ask, Mrs. Sheridan, is this separate to the previous issue?
It is, yes.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to say that I understand the reservations about marijuana facilities in town. But I also want to point out that alcohol kills more drugs than all other drug combined and controlled substances. So the challenge is also consider that if we're talking about, you know, prohibiting legal businesses or plant-based medicines in town. Maybe you should also consider that. In the amount of liquor stores, I mean, you know, less than a mile from BR, we have two, three liquor stores. And that's certainly more of a threat to our students. So if you, if you want to try to, you know, if you're arguing on the basis of like illegal substances and drug use, I mean, look at alcohol. I mean, take on that. Marijuana is completely, it's a separate issue, but if we're allowing that many liquor stores in town, you reconsider plant-based, sorry, I lost my internet connection. You know, reconsider that as well, because I feel like the arguments that are being made are basically all invalidated by the fact that we have multiple liquor stores in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Any other citizens for citizen open forum that wish to speak?
Man, I have Joe with his hand raised.
I'm sorry, Josh, who is it?
Joe.
Joe.
If you Joe or if at Greenbrier Lane, President Rushton. Thank you all again for your service as you are representing all of us through the voting process that has been provided to us as citizens. It seems to me that the, and I'm talking about the resolution that you're going to be voting upon, that I'm neutral with regard to what your decision is with regard to the marijuana shops. However, it seems to me that what the initial question is or what the first part of the resolution is, is that you're acknowledging the vote. And I'm certainly hopeful that you will acknowledge that we voted, or those of us that chose to vote, that that is part of our civic responsibility. I'm concerned if that is not going to be supported, that we have a greater issue as citizens that want to become involved. But again, I greatly appreciate the work that you're doing and volunteering your time, so thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Is there any other citizens for citizens' open forum that wish to speak? Mark, go ahead.
Yep.
Good evening, counselors, Mark Lindy, Michael Road, Bridgewater. I just wanted you to urge the counselors to vote no on the resolution. I moved here with my wife in September 2019 from Barockton, and all you got to do is look closely at what's going on over there. There's a marijuana shop just around every corner. I think it's a bad idea to finance schools with marijuana money, and that's all I'm going to say. I hope you do your due diligence, thank you. And also, one more thing, I'm sorry, I don't think it was an overwhelming vote because of the number and the percentage of the vote in this election. I do not think it represents the town of Bridgewater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other citizens for citizens' open forum?
I'd like to add a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Robinson.
Hi, Suzy Robinson from Holly Lane. Just one thing I, I hope that the counselors consider as you vote tonight. I know economic development is a huge priority and focus. I'm a huge supporter and advocate for diversifying, encouraging more, you know, mom and pop shops and additional commercial business in Bridgewater. However, I also think that for anybody who is interested in economic development, that you do think with a business mind, and when you think about any issues that come to our town and affect our town, that all facets are considered. A lot of what's been promoted around the expansion of retail marijuana has been solely based on tax benefit. I simply ask the council to, you know, put your business hats on, think about like any business case, you look at all the different facets in terms of what will be the impact to the community, which can be health related to support, support and wraparound services related to medical issues, police, fire, et cetera. And there's also an aspect too, and I realize this is more at the federal level, if you have really done some research and looking at some of the details around the Moore Act and and other things around restorative justice. So again, hoping that you're putting on your business hat and thinking about something as a business case of why we should expand that isn't just singularly focused on tax benefit alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzy. Any other members of the public wishing to speak, citizens' open forum? Josh, I don't see any, do you?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, appointments, we have none. Moving to hearings, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing of Order 0FY21-045. It is 7/23, capital transfer order, general fund. At their meeting held on 5/17/21, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval. The Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval at their meeting held on 5/24/21. I will first ask if there are any general questions from the public? Any questions from the public on this order? Josh, I do not see any, just confirm for me if you would.
Do not see anyone.
Okay, is there anyone from the public speaking in favor of this order? Anyone from the public speaking in favor? I do not see anyone. Okay, is there anyone from the public speaking in opposition? Anyone from the public speaking in opposition? I see none. I'll then move to any questions from any member of the town council? Any questions from members of the town council, council what?
Just unmuting myself. I see in the sources, gift funding for public safety from Claremont, and I know that was tied into the approval of the project out there. So if it was a gift for public safety, is it tied directly to a line or a number of lines in the use of funds for public safety?
I can answer that, Mr. President. That is correct, Councilwood, it is tied to a couple of line items, one is, I'm sorry, the
Is it radio repeater?
Yeah, specifically the radio equipment upgrades, vehicle mounted and portable. So there's a multi-year effort to upgrade radio equipment, which will eventually have a total cost of somewhere around $6,000 to $700,000. But we are going gradually through that process, but that's specifically what that gift is tied to.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Gallagher. Counsel Gallagher, you muted.
Thank you, Mr. President, and if I could ask you, the town manager through you, Michael, the prison mitigation grant fund, the balance of the prison grant fund, is that the prison mitigation monies that we received back in 1997?
That is correct. That would be the last, the last few thousand dollars from, from that sale of the old hunt school, I believe.
No, no, it was, it was the expansion of the prison beds, wasn't it?
I'm sorry, you are correct.
Okay, so, okay, so that was $3 million back in 1997, so 24 years isn't bad.
I'll agree with that.
Thank you.
Counsel Colm Botes.
And looking at the expenditures, about the fifth line from the bottom is playground maintenance. And what specifically is that? Typically, maintenance wouldn't be considered a capital expense, so I'm wondering what that is.
You are correct, and that, that is probably an unfortunate term. We tend to try to draw a differentiation between maintenance and new equipment. That $10,000 is for new equipment, some of the equipment out there was damaged. Well, it doesn't say, it's Marathon Park, and some of that equipment was damaged, and we are making an effort to replace some of it. Some of it will be replaced in the fall with a larger appropriation request, but this will, this will sort of patch us through until, until that time. So it's for playground equipment.
Right, and one more question. I understand we're replacing the turf field at the, at BR for the football fields. What is the life expectancy of a turf surface like that? Do we know that?
My understanding is it's, it can be 20 years if maintained properly. So that's, that's what we're looking at in terms of this appropriation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Perry.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Anderson, as an extension of that question on the field, I thought I heard that this was more of a reconditioning of the existing field, not so much a replacement, as total replacement is going to be coming in at a much larger number. But the fact is, the field does need some attention. Why is these funds separate and outside of the scope of just the general funding that we give to the, the schools in and of itself? Shouldn't they have their own line items on maintaining the schools' fields and outside of us funding the repairs? And I'm assuming that we're paying 60% Rainham's doing for.
Exactly, that, that part is absolutely correct. So it's based upon the, the number of, of that allocation, the 59.97% is based upon the number of students or the proportion of students that Bridgewater feeds into the district. So to answer your question about budgeted items versus non-budgeted items, actually, the schools have worked very closely with us, or the districts has worked very closely with us to develop their annual capital request list. We have asked them not to incorporate that into their operating budget, because their operating budget should be simply the year-to-year expenses required to provide instruction, provide, you know, education. In this case, this is really a little more than just standard maintenance of the fields. This is, this is classified more as a capital expenditure, so the district has allocated this out to, to the two towns as a capital expense, and I think rightly so. Other expenses, they do cover within their budget, and we are, we are trying to come up with sort of a standard with the district and certainly in partnership with Rainham, so that we can have a very clear definition of what, what is considered capital expense, what is considered maintenance expense, what is considered a bonded expense. So as, as you know, when you pass the, the regional budget, you're passing the operational budget, and you're also passing a debt, well, the debt, the long-term debt, whether it's debt excluded or not, ours happens to be all debt excluded, but, but that debt is, is the annual bond payment. So, so what's not included there are, are capital expenses that don't have to be bonded. So so what's not included there are are capital expenses that don't have to be bonded. And so that's what you see in front of you tonight, that that replacement for the the football field.
And just an offside of that, so obviously, since we're seeing the request for funding to address the football field, has there been any discussion about the track situation?
I'm sure there has been at the district level, but the way the way the process works, and I'm not trying to sort of pass the buck, but the way the process works is the the district, the school committee determines what its capital needs are, prioritizes them, decides what it wants to do, and then and then informs us, you know, exactly what what that capital expense will be, and then we put it in front of the council. But I'm sure there has been conversation about the track. I just don't know exactly how that's been resolved or where that stands.
Certainly, I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Any other members of the council? Okay, seeing that we go ahead, go ahead and close the hearing at seven thirty one and entertain a motion to approve.
I mean, no approve. Second.
Okay, I'm going to move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Modus.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero against.
Hey, thank you. Moving on, I'm going to continue the hearing at seven thirty two for petition P twenty twenty one dash zero eleven. Cumberland Farms of Massachusetts, Inc., deemed business as Cumberland Farms for a change of beneficial interest and change of officer. I'm going to defer to the town manager.
Mr. President, we have had a another request from Cumberland Farms to continue this hearing until your meeting on the twenty ninth. And just by way of a little background information, as I think most people know Cumberland Farms has been sold to a large corporation, large multinational global corporation. But they have been working with the state of Massachusetts, the A B C C specifically, to come up with an easier way to transfer all the licenses statewide. So so that is those discussions are continuing, and so they have asked us if we would be willing to continue this until the twenty ninth.
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue that to June twenty ninth, seeing that requires no vote. I'll move to continue the hearing at seven thirty three for petition P twenty twenty one dash zero zero four, new lodging house license at eighty four South Street. Norma Jean Begley and William Saba doing business as the South Street House. I'm going to refer to the town manager.
Mr. President, we met with the petitioners roughly a week and a half ago and and explained to them the the issues associated with the building and what their intended use was and the requirements. They have chosen to withdraw their their petition for a lodging house license. So as of now, that that petition is considered withdrawn, and the council does not need to take any further action on that one at this time.
Excellent. Thank you. Seeing that we need no vote, I will move to licensed transactions, seeing this none, we'll move to presentations. I'll start with the first presentation he listed is Bias and Discrimination Community Survey Analysis. Dr. Jabril Solomon and Dr. Taylor Hall, both of Bridgewater State University, along with Dice and V C C R. I would just ask members of the council if we could just refrain from questions or comments until they get through the entire presentation, and I will turn it over to Dr. Solomon and Dr. Hall.
Thank you for having us. Can you all hear me well? But it's good. All right. Thank you. We appreciate your time and the opportunity to share with you some interesting findings that we have been analyzing. This study or report study, which is coming forth, was essentially conducted by Dr. Hall and myself. We don't have a horse in this race. We are the neutral, independent professors from the university. And Dice and V C C R have conducted some focus groups and survey to try to understand what's going on in the community in terms of things related to social justice at all levels. So essentially, what we've done is look at the data and did some analysis. And today, we would like to share with you what we found because I think it will inform a lot of different areas of policymaking, economic development, educational, policing, social services, I think, and also pretty much how the council will operate to represent its citizens in terms of their voices in policymaking. So let me share my screen. I guess the host need to enable me to share my screen if my, oh, not yet.
Just one moment, please.
Sure.
Okay, you should be able to share now.
I think, thank you so much. I think we are in business. Let me make sure everybody can see the screen. So we start from the top and way down. Can everybody see now? Yes. Okay, so essentially, what we've done is look at, you know, you know, the state of our community, what's happening in our community, like I said in the beginning of this presentation. So essentially, to set the kind of set the tone the to to ensure that decision-making, particularly from the council and all the other stakeholders in the community, that when we are making decisions, that that those decisions are informed by community voices. And this is what this research is about, essentially presenting to you as counselors and citizens some of the community voices about concerns that people are having about how the community is operating. So that's kind of the gist of this. And ultimately, by taking into consideration the community voices, we will be able to, as a community, researchers and councilmen and citizen, be able to figure out what needs to be improved, what decisions need to be made to really kind of enhance the lives of our community residents. So the two communities that we'll look at for this study were Bridgewater and Rainham. And so let me proceed. So our goal was sort of to understand issues related to social injustice. And social injustices, if you look at them, they include anything related to the social welfare of citizens, education, policing, economics, and even social services. These are all related to it. So a lot of time when people think about social justice, they think about only about race. And when they think about race, they only think about black and brown people. And what you will find out in this survey is that actually most of the participants in these surveys and focus group were not black and brown people. And most of the respondents to some of the questions about what needs to be fixed and addressed in this community were not black and brown people. So that's the good news, but essentially, that's kind of was the goal of it, to understand how we promote awareness to support residents' experiences, particularly people who are facing discrimination in any form of social injustice. And we're looking at all citizens because this survey didn't just cherry pick black and brown people or people of different ethnicity or non-white people and said, what is what's going on with you? We asked all the citizens, black, brown, from all walks of life, to share their experiences. So I wanted to just sort of give you that perspective, sort of when you think about what this, you know, what we're looking at, that you have a sense that actually this is what we're looking at. So using the lessons we learned from these presentations to be able to actually make a difference. I know that all of you councilmen, that's your mission. That's why you're serving. You would like to make a difference in this community. Next, I'm going to invite my friend and colleague, Dr. Hall, to walk us through some of the data.
Hi, everybody. Dr. Taylor Hall of Bridgewater State School of Social Work, now of the Boston Bruins, though I'm sure people are probably following a little along a little bit with the playoffs. So this is the data that we collected. So we had a hundred and thirty eight participants. And we have a breakdown here between where they're coming from. So about a quarter of the participants in this survey and the data collection effort were coming from the Rainham community, and seventy seven percent were about three quarters of the respondents were from Bridgewater. And so if we're thinking about how does this sort of compare to other demographic profiles of of what's happening in Plymouth County, we are looking at the participants of our study. They racially and ethnically really compare pretty well to what we're seeing in Bridgewater and in Rainham, though our survey, the data is a little bit more ethnically diverse. We had more multiracial people respond to this survey, more people who consider themselves to be Hispanic or Latinx, and just about the same rate of people who are white and African American. In terms of gender, you're seeing S under the sample, and then R is for Rainham, and B is for the gender breakdown for Bridgewater. So our sample, a higher rate of people who identify as female, you're seeing that that's obviously different from what we're seeing in Rainham and Bridgewater, where there's a little bit less, but about fifty fifty in each community. So this sample is a little bit skewed in terms of gender identity. Okay, so this is again a breakdown of the race and ethnicity. So what you're seeing here is that Rainham is in the top left corner, Bridgewater is in the top right corner. So you're seeing an accurate representation of what your community looks like racially and ethnically. And then in the middle here, you're able to see what our survey participants said that they were. So as I mentioned earlier, we have a higher rate of people who identify as multiracial, but pretty comparatively to both Bridgewater and Rainham communities, the most respondents, as Dr. Solomon had mentioned, identify as white. And so when we're thinking about some of the findings and contextualizing that, we just want to make sure that we're showing you who it is that responded and who's telling us the stories here.
And to just add one more thing, the reason why we tended to do this in research is that when you're doing research, you're taking a slice of a population. It's just like a big pie, you take a slice. And you want to ensure that the slice you're taking is representative of the rest of the pie. So what we're showing you here is that the slice of people that we participated in this survey in the focus group, those people are representative of the rest of the population in this group because it's very important in in research to validate that you are not cherry picking or just taking a slice that does not represent the rest of the people. So if you look at the distribution here, you will see that the slice of the people who participated in the survey is very similar to the greater population. And we needed to do that to ensure what we call internal validity of what we're trying to do.
Okay, and then here is age. So in terms of information that we could find on the percentages of people based on age in Bridgewater and Rainham, it's not as specifically broken down as what we're seeing in the middle here with our sample. For example, for folks who are under the age of eighteen in Bridgewater, we see about eighteen percent, about twenty one percent in Rainham, and about nine percent of our sample was under the age of eighteen. What we are seeing, however, is that the largest part of our sample are folks ages eighteen to twenty four. So again, this is sort of the future of the Bridgewater and the Rainham communities, people who are answering the survey. If we compare that to the Bridgewater and Rainham communities in terms of their age, we obviously see the largest percentage of folks are between the ages of eighteen and sixty four. That's again how that data is broken up. We see that there is a good percentage of folks in our sample as well, around seventy percent, seventy five percent of our sample is between the ages of eighteen to sixty four. So again, pretty comparable. And then in terms of folks who are sixty five and older, we're pretty close to what we see in Bridgewater. We've got about twelve percent of folks who answered our survey identifying that they are over the age of sixty five, about fourteen percent in Bridgewater, and quite higher in Rainham, at almost nineteen percent of folks. So about a fifth of people in Rainham are identifying as sixty five years of age or over.
And one more thing to point out about this, the reason why we we do this. I mean, it's always, as researchers, we always need to sort of explain what we're doing. Why did we look at age and why is it important? Because we wanted to point out to you, counselors and citizens, that the voices that you're going to hear from this survey are the voices of the next generation. Forty percent of the people who participate are between the age of eighteen to twenty four. That's the next generation, next generation of homeowners, next generation of employers, next generation of voters, and next generation of people who are going to elect councilman and other people into office. So you're hearing the the voice of the next generation. Right behind it, you're hearing the voice of the people who are in their middle age, between thirty five and forty five. They are almost almost twenty six percent of the voices that you're hearing. So it is important that to highlight that because to contextualize what the findings are, that we are not just hearing from a smaller group of people, but we are hearing from the future constituencies of this community. Now, we listen to the stories in terms of what do the people tell us, what does the residents tell us? And one of the questions we ask all the residents who participate, all of them, black, white, brown, from all walks of life, from all economic background, when we ask them, have you experienced or witnessed identity-based mistreatment of people based on either their race, their ethnicity, their religion, their gender, their sexual orientation, their disability, their mental health, their size, because sizes is a real issue in the community? Sixty nine percent of the people who answered it said, yes, I have experienced it and or witnessed all these forms of injustices happening in this community. Next, we ask people, how inclusive do you think this community is in terms of sort of how it looks at people? How inclusive it is in terms of race, gender, and ethnicity? Again, sixty one percent of the people who answered the question said the Bridgewater Rainham community, they do not find it inclusive when looking at race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, disability, mental health, and sizing. I mean, this is something for us to really think about, that this is what people are saying, that that's what what they experienced, that's happened. We continue to ask them to tell us about, you know, their stories. And we said, okay, what are the most prevalent experiences and stories related to all these injustices that are race-based, ethnicity-based, religion, sexual orientation, disability, mental health? And when we ask them, what are the most prevalent forms of injustices that you have witnessed living in this community? You can see the numbers. Thirty nine percent said race and ethnicity. Twenty six percent right behind it, not too far away, said sexual orientation discrimination is very high in this community. Body shaming, body image, people who are oversized or overweight. Fifteen percent said, yes, they are also discriminated based on their size. People with mental health issues, even if it's ten percent, ten percent is significant. People with disabilities and mental health issues said, yes, I am being discriminated and experiencing the prevalence of discrimination in this community. And of course, another ten percent said, being poor, being low socio-economic, whether you're black or brown, you are being discriminated against and mistreated based on your socioeconomic status. So another interesting finding that citizens that you're representing are telling us this is what's going on in their community. Next, since we wanted to hear the voices of the people, we just didn't want to just rely on numbers because researchers like ourselves, we can talk numbers and statistics all the time, and numbers and statistics sometimes can be confusing to people who don't do that kind of work. But I'm going to give you a minute to read for yourself because we asked people to tell us. And these are some direct quotes. We didn't edit them. We took them exactly as people have written them down and shared them with us. So I'll give you a minute to read for yourself. and share them with us. So I'll give you a minute to read for yourself. I guess you're starting to get a sense of what people are talking about even more. These are also other things that people have said. And if you notice, this second slide is mostly leaning towards what the high school students are telling us. So I think that this sort of start to bring it home that you can see that, you know, this is not just about statistical percentages that we're presenting. But we also wanted to represent the stories of what actually the commentary that people have written down. And we just kept in pace, we didn't change any of it or edited it. I mean, we could have given you pages and pages, but I think from these two slides, you have a sense of what some of the concerns and some of the issues that your residents and citizens are starting to sort of raise when we ask them about their social justice issues going on in the community. Dr. Hall?
Sure, yeah. So in terms of moving forward, we also asked participants how satisfied they were with town and school officials on addressing sort of just general issues around diversity, equity, and inclusion in the community. And about a quarter, seventy three percent, say they're not fully satisfied. We'll explain a little bit more about sort of some of the recommendations moving forward and how to make people feel more satisfied and included here. Secondly, how satisfied are you with town and school officials on addressing your own personal experiences of identity-based mistreatment? And again, we're seeing about two thirds, sixty seven percent felt like it wasn't addressed. About a third are also saying it's been somewhat addressed. Similar to about a fifth saying they're somewhat satisfied with what the community is doing. But clearly, there's some room here for improvement. In terms of this improvement piece, part of it is transparency and people in the community sort of feeling like they are informed about what's going on regarding policies, processes, practices, and procedures around identity-based mistreatments in the community. Again, about sixty percent are feeling like they're not really informed about the policies, the practices, and what's been going on in the community to alleviate some of the mistreatments that's been, that have been happening, that have been reported. About thirteen percent of people feel like they're somewhat informed. And then about a quarter of people feel like they are being informed about what's been going on.
This is also a very important part of the findings because the city council, you might be doing a lot of great things. The police department might be doing a lot of reform and training. The school department might be doing all kinds of training. But all those training and good things you're doing, somehow it's not, the citizens are telling. Sixty one percent are saying, I have no idea what you're doing. So there's a gap in what communicating, what are you doing to the citizen? Because I think when people are not aware of what you're doing, in addition to saying that I am facing discrimination, I'm facing mistreatment, and they're not aware of all these policies and programs you're putting in place to try to improve things, you will have a disconnect. So I think this finding is very vital in terms of sort of the council rethinking, how do we make information accessible to people who are residents? Because sixty one percent are saying, I am not informed about what's going on and what are they doing to address issues related to mistreatment of people? And of course.
So from this data.
Go ahead, Dr. Hall.
Sorry, it says my internet connection's unstable, so I'm not sure if folks can hear me. From this information, we've come up with a few community asks as a team. Dr. Solomon, did you want to say something first?
Sure. I mean, one of the things we wanted to do is that this ask, think about this as being part of the solution. Because researchers would just present a problem and go home. It doesn't help. And research is not about shaming or guilting or putting people out or trying to just kind of show the ugliness of a community. Research is about saying, here are the problems. Here is what we know about the problem. And here are some things that we can work on to improve this community. And that's why they ask are sort of like some of the things based on the research that we would like the council to think about and to consider as it's moving forward and trying to make improvement. For example, the first one is that, you know, how do we look at accountability? And how do we develop knowledge about things? And how do we work to improve our processes to improve people's lives? Dr. Hall?
Yeah, and just to kind of piggyback off of that, sometimes, I mean, I know obviously we're holding a town council meeting now and there is a community forum, a space where people from the community can come in and voice their concerns as we just witnessed. But maybe something a little less rigid as a recommendation, something like a community listening session or a feedback forum where folks can come forward with the things they're experiencing and some ideas for collaboration moving forward. Secondly, we were also thinking that enacting specific measures, policies, and laws to demonstrate this accountability to the community as well as key performance indicators of the progress that's been made on diversity, equity, and inclusion to the resident stakeholders. So this could be perhaps tracking the demographic information of people who come into contact with local law enforcement, people and school administrators, folks who file grievances for these interactions and just a way to track trends and progress that's related to the discrimination and the issues that were highlighted in the data from this community survey.
And of course, in addition to the community ask, which was kind of highlighting some of the things, to continue with the theme of being part of the solution and not just highlighting the problem. The two agencies, DICE and BCCR, are offering ways to work together with the community to resolve these issues. And this is sort of like the positive approach to sort of this finding. We always try to avoid what we call the deficit model. Let's just highlight the deficits that's happening in the community. It doesn't help anybody. So we're looking at the positive self-improvement model where we're saying, okay, the two communities, these two agencies that are local are saying, here are some things that we would like to work with you as councilors, as residents to really improve the situation. And these three things that they propose is that a racial and social justice community development program where you can have community forums to build awareness. I mean, it could be a simple community forum where the councilman, the city council can hold a community forum to inform people about laws and actions or things you're doing to address social justice. Remember, sixty one percent said they are not aware of what you're doing. Maybe these community forums would be. And DICE and BCCR are happy to be an ally in terms of promoting and working with you. Also looking at racial and educational justice development in the schools where if the safe spaces for the students, supporting the teachers and the staff, professional development. So those kids who are in the school being bullied because they are, there's a size issue or they being bullied because they're gay, lesbian, bisexual, or transgender, or they're black, brown, or even they're poor white kids. Of course, who are being bullied around, you know, maybe DICE would like to work with you. In terms of the policing too, how do we work with the police to improve the relationship and the working relationship with the community with the police working together? Essentially, that's kind of sort of, you know, what these two agencies who are local to the two communities are putting on the table as being part of the solution. And I think it's very important that, you know, and I highly encourage, I know I'm just a researcher on the outside, Dr. Hall and I, but I really would like to encourage the council to consider what these two local agencies are putting on the table and are willing to partner with you to do to improve the lives of all citizens that are part of the Bridgewater Rainham community. And finally, I'm going to close with a couple of reflection questions that I, and after these reflection questions, I will get out of the sharing so we can kind of talk about these. I would like to invite all of you, councilmen and all, to think about these two questions as we open the forum for discussions and reflections. I'll give you a couple of minutes to read these questions and we will get out of the sharing and come back into the gallery to discuss them.
And maybe we can put the questions in the chat too.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we can. We'll put them in the chat too. And that's the end of our presentation. So let me start sharing and welcome back, everybody. The forum is now open and I will try to put those two questions in the chat. But the forum is yours. This is your work.
Dr. Solomon and Professor Hall, Dr. Hall. First of all, on behalf of the town council, thank you very much for the presentation. This is not the first time I've sat through this presentation. It's really a lot of excellent takeaways and sort of eye-opening for the community as a whole. And we certainly have a lot of work to do. I'll open it up by just saying for myself personally, I think that there's a really a large communications breakdown. I think there's a lot of work that's being done and it's not really reflected properly to the community. I'll talk specifically about, you know, conversations around police, being a police officer myself. I'm quite familiar with and implementing the Massachusetts Police Reform Bill. You know, I would say to my fellow councilors that Massachusetts is really ahead of the curve in this area. So you see many of the things that are in the police reform bill, but in fact, Massachusetts and in particular, the Bridgewater Police Department has implemented years ago. So there seems to be a disconnect because I know that Chief Delmoni has really done a fantastic job presenting to not only to the council. And many of you know, certainly through your survey work and research that, you know, he's really an excellent leader. We're very lucky. We have a really good police department. They're really on the, I would say, the front edge of, you know, the types of training that you're talking about, anti-bias training and whatnot. But there seems to be a disconnect even with all that happening about how do we let the community? So what has not really, I have not really thought about in the past is, not that the website is, you know, the end-all be-all, but you know, one is the forums, you know, again, you know, having more forums in the community with the police chief and talk about the things that the town police department has already implemented and been doing for a number of years, where are they headed? And certainly a landing page somewhere on the town's website that really spells out all of the things because even as a member of the town council, I think that diversity, equity, inclusion issues within our town and, you know, the pride flag is an example of that. That the council as a whole collectively is hearing members of the community and taking what I would consider to be the term action, we're taking action. And I think that's been a very progressive, you know, moves on behalf of the council to hear what the community is saying and then take action. So with that, it's just given me some ideas about how to move forward and I would certainly open it to members of the council that, you know, wish to speak. Council Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question and a comment. And some of the statistics that were revealed tonight obviously are alarming and some of the quotes that were, that were shown tonight. I remember being at a meeting a couple of months ago where the DICE group went around the table and each of them read some of the quotes that were there. And it was very moving to hear them from the younger people that were, that were reading them. Certainly, we have a lot to do in town and certainly a lot to do in this country. But what we have done, and I know it's not reflected in the, in the statistics tonight, but as, as mentioned, I think that what we did yesterday with the community coming together, raising the pride flag for a week during Pride Month. So many people are just so appreciative of the efforts that this town made for that event and to show their, show their respect. So, you know, I think that if you take those surveys tomorrow, you might have, it might be a little bit better, but we certainly have a lot of work to do. In addition to later on tonight in our agenda, there's a couple of money articles that are going to be referred out that are going to address some of the needs in diversity and equity inclusion in our community. So hopefully, six months, a year from now, those statistics are better. So I guess my question then leads to, what was the timeframe of that sampling? Was it, was it recent or was it very recent or was it within the last year or what was the timeframe of those? Some of those statistics?
It was within the last year. And we do plan to do a follow-up. So, so all of the things that you're doing now, because remember, this, this survey or this, these surveys and focus group was done within the last year to have a baseline. We are going planning to do additional survey in the next six months, in the next year. Then we'll be able to compare from the baseline how things are improving. So all of the things you're doing with Pride Month and all the other initiatives you're taking into account are not lost. Because we are planning to do another follow-up survey in six months and another one a year out to be able to see now compared to what we have now, how far and how much progress? And what are some of the remaining issues? Because some issues may be resolved when we do another survey in six months. People, the answers could go the other way.
Thank you.
Council Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Dr. Solomon and Dr. Hall. It was a great presentation. You know, I think maybe I would start by, maybe with just an apology. I think if people are experiencing that in our town, we certainly still have work to do. So I appreciate the efforts to collect the information. I know, as others have said, we are hearing it. You know, I think in terms of action, I think I probably have a few comments. You know, action to me seems like a singular event. And so while I think we need a collection of singular events to move forward, you know, I might even focus a little bit more on behaviors, right? So what are, what are some longer-term changes? And we can just sort of drive into the community with the benefit of the roles we have. So I would be eager and probably connecting to learn more from those resources about the behaviors, you know, that we can exhibit or assist with and make that change. The other thing I might add is I think the data is great. It's a relatively small sample size. So back to the action piece, I would love to see our town find a way to invest in maybe the resources or the polling capability to bring this sort of question to a larger audience and maybe get a larger sampling and frankly, I think, collect more relevant information. I expect to hear what we heard here, but I'd love to expand the audience a little bit in the future. Thank you.
Any other members of the council have any comments? Council Sousa? You're muted, Council Sousa. Council Sousa, you're muted.
I think I just took care of it. All right, thank you. Being a senior citizen myself, seventy five years old, I guess I qualify. I have experienced in town to different places, to different people where they treat us different. When we say things, I, they like look at you and say, yeah, he's an old man, he's just rambling. I've had people refer to me as old man numerous times when they know my name is Frank. And we see this in other places. And, you know, this is part of, hey, we're part of the community, you know? I've been here twenty four years. I think I'm part of the community. And we shouldn't be treated that way. And I'm not the only person in town who gets treated that way because I've talked to my friends of my age, they're not teenagers, my grandchildren are. Anyway, that's what I wanted to let, no, I think this was great and I think we have to work more on that spread. Recognize the seniors for, someone once said to me, knowledge comes with age. And do I lose it all when I reach a certain point? Thank you.
Thank you, Council Moore. Council Wood?
Thank you to both presenters. It was, it was a very nice presentation. And I agree with all the comments here, you know, we need to strive to do as best as we can. I would be interested, a question for a future session, I'd be interested to know more specifically about Bridgewater since that's where we control things a little bit more. But more specifically, how are we doing on our membership for boards and committees and, and other activities? Are we, are we drawing in? how are we doing on our membership for boards and committees and, and other activities? Are we, are we drawing in enough diversity? Gender wise and all the other categories as well? And if we're not, what can we do better to draw in and, and bring new voices to the table?
Thank you, Counsel Wood. Counsel Colm Bodis.
I think Counselor Moore makes a good point about, you know, steps, concrete steps and actions we can take. But I also think what we really need to do is undertake a process, a process of opening channels of communication and listening to each other. And we're not the first town to contemplate such issues. And I'm wondering perhaps what other models other towns have taken advantage of to kind of facilitate that process of more a more open dialogue and frank conversations. And along with that, I'm wondering what role Bridgewater State might play and specifically the Department of Social Work, presumably budding social workers would like some real world experience and out in the field and solving real, real world problems. So I'm wondering if there's any sort of, sort of learning communities program that could take place where, where class work, where students could work, you know, do class projects that come out into the community and actually solve real world problems. I'm wondering if that's something that we might look at in the future.
Oh, you want to answer that?
I would say absolutely. That we're definitely interested in things like that. So we'll have to keep in touch.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other counselors for any other additional comments? Okay, seeing none, I would just follow up with Counselor Moore when I was referencing action, you know, one of the things that you had mentioned is singular. And certainly tonight we have a transfer order before a slated tonight to support the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee financially. So we'll have yet another action to take tonight. One more step showing the council's strong support in this area. And I hope that everyone considers moving this forward and funding this item. So with that said, I don't see any other questions. I would open it back up to Dr. Solomon or Dr. Hall if you have any additional closing remarks. If not, we certainly appreciate you taking the time and sitting through three hearings to get to this point. But certainly great work, great presentation. And it's, it's really eye opening for us as a council to see really what the community thinks about diversity and what we're doing. We need, obviously need to do more. Thank you.
The last thing I would say is that, you know, what we, as we're designing the next iteration of this study in the next six months, we would love to make sure that we don't leave any stone unturned. So all the initiative that the council, you're preparing, all the things that you're doing and all the communities you're working with, we would love to integrate all of that into the survey, into the study so that it's more comprehensive as we expand the sample size. So we're looking forward to collaborating with you and making sure that all the work that you're doing and all the initiative, the Pride event and all these events are integrated into the study so that it's become a more accurate representation of some of the changes that are taking place so that the next report, the next time we come and present it to you, another findings, hopefully six months from now, eight months from now, that these percentages will be different. And thank you for your time. That's it.
And I was just going to say too, we have a report forthcoming that we'll be able to distribute. So that will be good, too. You can have those charts and graphs and things like that.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to our next presentation, represencing process. A town clerk, Merrily Hunt, is going to present. I would just let the town council members know this is a complicated process that we're going to be provided really a high level overview of what we envision as to be the steps to go through this process. Certainly it's going to be long and complicated. Merrily Hunt has been working very hard behind the scenes to present the information tonight. I would ask that, you know, when we open it up to questions and comments, if we could, in order to be more efficient and move the meeting along, you know, refer to questions that would be benefits beneficial to you or to the community if they're really in high, low level details. Reserve those for direct questions after the meeting through the town clerk could be appreciated. So Merrily Hunt, with that being said, the floor is yours.
Very much, President Reston. On March 15th of 2021, the Office of the Secretary of the Commonwealth, can you hear me all right? Sometimes my mic doesn't work well, so I'm trying with the earphones.
Sound good.
The Secretary of the Commonwealth asked the Bridgewater Town Clerk's Office if we would like GIS services while preparing the town's represincting job. And we said yes. So I want to start with that, that the, that the physical work of doing GIS for this is not in our hands. We have to request that from someone else. We gratefully accepted the secretary's offer of that. Since then, since March of 2021, we've studied and worked toward understanding the mathematically complex system required to determine municipal precincts and districts. Because the town council, pardon me, will ultimately be responsible for approving Bridgewater's excuse me, represincting structure. And because the timeline for restructuring and approval has been shortened by COVID and other government hurdles, I ask for time tonight to describe the basic facts and the challenges involved in represincting Bridgewater. As the president said, it's a complicated process. And this is just to fill you in on some of what that process is and tell you that we are trying to lighten the load on your shoulders. So I'm ready to share my screen. Josh, am I a co-host at this point?
Yes, you're all set.
Okay. So let me see. There it is. So this is our presentation. I have to see if I can kind of minimize the people that I'm looking at here. These are the folks who have helped us so far, who have been advisors and for whom we are very grateful. Basically, this is going to be me reading the slides. I know that is not a great presentation style and I wish that I didn't have to do that. But I couldn't find any cute little graphics that just said it all. So I will walk you through it. I've tried to add some color to make it a little more lookable. These are the first four slides I'm going to show you are facts that we need to remember as we go forward. This first one is about precincts and censuses. So a precinct may have no more than 4,000 residents included in it. All town precincts must be population proportional. You have to have the same basic amount of population in each precinct. The Commonwealth defines voting locales by precincts, not by districts or boards. So all precincts must be within plus or minus 5.5% of the total population of each other. And precincts are made up of federally designated census blocks, which may not, without some difficulty, be changed in size or dimension. BSU is a census block consisting of 2,486 residents. That kind of sets the bar for us. That means that we can't have a precinct that's any smaller than 2,486 residents if we make BSU a precinct all of its own. BSU census block, large size dictates all precinct sizes, because they have to be within the 0.5% plus or minus. The next facts to remember are that districts are about this districts and Bridgewater's town charter. A district may contain one or multiple precincts. All districts, just like the precincts, must be population proportional. In other words, you can't put three precincts in one district and one precinct in another district. They have to be population proportional. And if the precincts are population proportional, that means you need to have the same number of precincts in each district. The town charter presently calls for seven district counselors and two at-large counselors, a total of nine counselors. I'm going to talk a minute about population. Bridgewater currently has seven precincts and seven districts. We have them. They're all the same. A precinct and a district boundary and designations are identical. All seven precincts are nearing the maximum allowable population, which as we said is 4,000. The 2020 census data is estimated to be at least 28,000. We think it will be probably considerably more than that. So if you look at that population, we're going to exceed the limit of 4,000 for each of the seven, for the seven precincts, you divide 28,000 by seven and you get 4,000, which is the maximum number you can have in a precinct. So needs and support. Bridgewater needs a represincting plan with at least one more precinct by the end of October this year. The Commonwealth, through the Donahue Institute and the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office, provide us with the GIS support, as I mentioned at the beginning, which helps us create the precinct map. We don't do that on the own, on our own. They create the precinct maps for us. After the precinct map is determined, it will go back to the legislature and they will determine the legislative district lines, not our internal town district lines, but the legislative district lines. Our request to rearrange maps, our requests to rearrange maps has to be scheduled and time shared with others around the Commonwealth. We are certainly not the only town or city who needs to have their GIS support. Bridgewater has its own GIS equipment, but we don't have personnel to operate it. So when moving areas in the GIS map to rearrange the precinct map, entire census blocks are moved as one. So divisions smaller than a census block may not be moved, just a fact to remember. Here's the timeline we're facing. Now until September 30th, we're going to be reviewing, evaluating the current precinct lines. On September 30th, by September 30th, we will have the official census numbers. We hope that we'll have it before the 30th of September, but at least by then, we know we will have it. By the 30th of October, the town council must vote to approve a new, new precinct boundaries and submit it to the LEDRC, which we'll talk about later. And in December, we will be sending out to citizens their local census in which they must be notified of their new voter registration precinct. It's a quick timeline. So let's talk a minute about what we cannot do. I think I mentioned this at the beginning, but I'll repeat it. We cannot add one precinct, then join it to another precinct as a district without having an equal number of precincts in each district. Remember, they're all population proportional. In my opinion, from what I've looked at for the last several weeks and thought about for the last several nights while I haven't been sleeping, is that it seems impossible to represinct Bridgewater without making a charter change. It may not be impossible, but it seems pretty difficult. Examples of what can be done. Two examples of possible changes to meet the requirements of equally apportioned precincts and districts are going to be presented. They're not the only options. There are examples of what might be done. I've tried to focus on maintaining at least nine town council seats. The first example is going to add two counselors, one district counselor, and reduce at-large counselors to one. The second maintains nine total counselors with six districts and three at-large counselors. So what we do if we're changing to eight districts? We would add one precinct, which becomes District Eight. There would have to be a charter change to do that. And we would have eight district counselors. To ensure an uneven number of counselors, we would have to reduce the at-large counselors by two or add a third. So it would make it either nine total counselors or 11 total counselors, depending on which you choose. It would also require a charter change to either add, have three at-large counselors or to have one at-large counselor. Because as we mentioned, the charter says seven district counselors and two at-large counselors. So example number one, slide two, talking about the pros. Three at-large counselors would ensure a better ensure one on the ballot at every annual town election. The benefit is that it draws more voters to the polls. There would be no additional polling location needed. If we get beyond a certain number, we're not going to be able to, we're not going to be able to hold the elections in the high school because we won't have room to put all ballot boxes at the back of the auditorium. We would only need storage for one new voting machine and it's possible that we can locate that in my office at the Academy Building. The cons to this example are that we're eliminating, we could be eliminating two at-large counselors. That will negatively affect the voter turnout. It will require Bridgewater to do more extensive redistricting in 2030. We would still be just about maximum with all of our precincts. So that's why we would have to do it again in 2030, go over this whole big process. Residents in all precincts bordering precinct eight will undergo a change of voter registration location. And counselors residing on streets or incorporated in the new precinct eight will lose their current seats. Not that they can't run again, but because there would still be nine counselors. So you could still all run again, but it would be a rearrangement of that. The expenses for something like this example, one, we'd need two new desks for the council chamber, possibly if you had two new, two more counselors. We're going to, in any way, we need one new ballot tabulator and a new ballot box, four to five additional poll workers at each election, two to three additional signs, one additional warden's box, two ballot bins, two long and short tables, eight chairs guaranteed. And always we need guarantee systems to set up and take down and store voting equipment. It's something that our office can no longer handle on its own. So example two, we're going to look at changing to 12 precincts and having three at-large counselors. I'm going to warn you, the, the red here, the red warning says that the Commonwealth Support Staff has warned me that this example may not be feasible. They described it as a hail mary pass and something we shouldn't pin our hopes on, but they are trying to see if they can work it out for us. So I'm going to describe it to you. You can hear how it would work. We would divide the town into 12 precincts. And then we would put two precincts in each district so that the 12 precincts would equal six districts. They would be labeled things like precinct one A and one B would be District One. Precincts two A, two B would be District Two. We would add one at-large counselor position. So there would be nine counselors total, six of them district, three of them at-large. We would ensure the uneven number of counselors. A charter change would be needed to make it six districts and three at-large counselors. This is we tried one, one example earlier than this and I tried very hard to do 14 precincts. And so we could keep it at seven and two. That was a no-go with the GIS folks because of the large census block of BSU. It, it makes the precincts so large that we can't do we can't, we can't do it with 14. So for this one, precincts for 12 precincts and at-large counselors, these are the pros. Three at-large counselors ensure one at each annual election. It'll draw more voters. It maintains the number of current existing counselors. It allows for additional growth within the precincts so that rigorous precincting would not be likely before 2050. The cons, many residents will have district and precinct changes. Existing counselors may find their precinct has changed. And District Seven will be eliminated. That most certainly does not mean that all the residents in District Seven will not still be voters and be in a precinct. They will just be in a precinct labeled something from one through six, A through B. So the, what that, the expenses, the costs for this change to 12 precincts, we would be adding five additional. We would be adding five additional ballot boxes and voting tabulators, twenty-five additional poll workers, ten to fifteen additional signs, five wardens boxes, five to ten bins for ballot boxes, long and short tables, twenty-five to thirty chairs, expansion to three polling locations. And we would still need guaranteed permanent assistance for setup and take-down and to store the voting equipment. We would not be able to store it where we currently, currently store it. Other examples which maintain nine councillors. Nine precincts, nine districts, no councillor at large. Five district councillors, which would be ten precincts, and four at-large councillors. Four district councillors, which would mean eight precincts and five at-large councillors. So my suggestion to simplify the future re-presenting is to make a charter change and make it more flexible, say something like, and I just picked these words out, these aren't legally vetted or anything like that, but it could say something like, citizens shall be represented by one councillor from their district and at least one at-large councillor. The number of at-large councillors shall be sufficient to ensure an uneven number of councillors. And then I'm going to go over just quickly some information that's provided by the Secretary's Office that I thought would be important for you to know. It's about the Local Election District Review Committee, Commission, the LEDRC. It's an independent commission. There, the members are the Attorney General, the Secretary of the Commonwealth, and a third member appointed by the Governor. They have authority to reject any some plans that we submit. And that would require local authorities to reconfigure the wards and precincts. If a locality fails to submit a plan, or if the plan doesn't pass the LEDRC review, then they can, they can appoint a master to, to redo it. Let's see, and the, because the LEDRC is mandated to make the local divisions itself, so it can appoint someone to just do that for us. We wouldn't have say in it. They're going to review the submission of accept or reject it. Their meetings are public. Will be notified what their decision is. If there are problems with it when it's submitted, we will have seven days to respond. And that it will go to the Town Council or the, or the Town Manager. And then we will correct the deficiencies. And the City Council can revise the plan and bring it into compliance in a timely fashion. That timely fashion is going to be seven days. If you fail to adopt that in a timely manner, the City Manager may give an executive order making the changes. And if corrections are not made, the LEDRC can either make them itself or appoint a master. And if they appoint a master to do the work, we're going to pay all the costs of that. So that's my presentation. The Town Clerk's Office looks forward to continuing collaborative work with the Secretary, the Donahue Institute, the Town Manager, Town Attorney, Directors of the Department of Pub-, Director of the Department of Public Works and Bridgewater Citizens to ensure Bridgewater citizens fairly apportioned precincts and meet our legal obligations and help you arrive at decisions that you can vote on. So I will stop my share. And take any questions you have that I can answer. Councillor Wood.
Thank you.
Councillor Rushton, it's all through you, so I will let you do the calling on the.
Well, I was just going to thank you for your presentation. Very informative. I know you've worked very hard behind the scenes and appreciate you bringing this to us. And I'll certainly open it up to the council and defer to Council Wood at this time.
Thank you. Really great information, good presentation. A lot of that comes from state law, right? So we can all read about the basics of the four thousand. One thing I wasn't aware of, and maybe you can expand a little bit on, is the, is the census block? And why the number is that number for BSU and why BSU itself is a census block?
It's set by the federal government, and I don't know their rationale. And the other things I don't know, I can tell you what I don't know. I can tell you a little bit of what I don't know. I don't know how many census blocks we have in Bridgewater. I have asked and they weren't able to tell me the GIS folks kind of, his name is Yuri, the person who does it for us, and he said, well, let me try, let me look, and he tried and he was gone for quite a while, and he came back and he said, I really can't, and I don't know why you'd want to know that. I'm not making that judgment. That was Yuri's judgment. I know the Town Manager has asked, my husband has asked, you know, I haven't been able to get that information.
Yeah, I just wondered how they came up with that number because that doesn't seem to match on ha- onsite housing or the number of registered voters or, or any of those other numbers that we see for BSU.
I believe it's the same census block for which we receive the opportunity zone. I think it's that same census block, so it's a low-income census block, and that's basically all I can tell you. That is, is that it is.
Thank you.
For what?
Councillor Gallagher.
You're still.
Councillor Gallagher, you muted.
I didn't hit the right button. There we go. Mr. President, thank you. Merrily, huh, that's, this is the daunting task you have. It's unbelievable. What has to go into it in a short period of time. Now, I guess my question as far as timing goes. So the council, the nine of us, will make the final decision as to how we want this to be. And you will make a recommendation, a, a final recommendation down the road, or how would, how will this work?
I will, I will present something to you. And then you have a month to either accept it or to figure out something better.
So we, so we can amend, we can amend what you proposed, or?
Yes, it's yours to vote on. So you are going to have to make the, the bottom line decision. I will just tell you, when you look at the GIS map, we were, we were doing it this afternoon with Michael and, and our Town Attorney, Jason. And when you look at a map and you take a census block out of this precinct and put it over into this precinct to make this smaller precinct a little bit bigger, you've made a hole that you, you can't choose how much that, how much what you're grabbing is going to be because it's going to be a census block and you don't know the exact amount in that census block. And you've put it over here, and that's changed this one, and that's changed this one. And then you take something to fix this one, and then you take something to fix that one, and it's, I just created little square things you used to have where you had to move the, the, the the slides all around and try to get all the numbers lined up. That's what it feels like in my brain. It's, it's a never-ending process.
I, I just hope we can, I think we need to keep the nine councillors. I don't think we should reduce it. I don't think we should be adding more. I, I, I think however it can work, go to six districts and three at-large, so we do have a potentially more active election cycles. That's what makes sense to me. But we'll see where it goes.
I'm, I'm very interested in that, knowing what the council might want to prioritize. For instance, keeping the nine councillors or going to fewer or, or going to more. I mean, I've been prioritizing the nine, but I didn't know if that would be your priority.
One, one proposal, maybe I missed it, did not write, did not say go to all at large, right?
No, no. No, nothing said that. You're right.
Okay.
I think that, I think the most that I had was four cap, four districts and five at-large.
Thank you.
Sure.
The other council, Councillor Perry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Merrily, again, thank you for all your hard work on this. Again, seemed like a daunting task. But just for a little clarification, so obviously it seems like no matter how we go, there's going to have to be a charter change. What is the order that might need to take place? Do we make the decision on the alignment first, then change the charter, or do we got to go the opposite way? And I mean, our timeframe is tight. As I've known from prior years with Charter Review Committees, this whole process takes time and obviously is going to get to voters. Do we have enough time to make a?
Right now.
It does. I, I would refer some of this to our Town Attorney and to Michael Dutton. We, we talked today. And I would ask specifically, Jason, if you had an answer back from Michelle and if you want to speak anything about that issue.
No, I mean, obviously, we're going to have to go into much more detail in the future about how we do it. But I think the charter change will have to occur first, if that's the route we have to take. And then based on the charter change, we can do the redrawing of the map, right? Because we, we don't want to go through the exercise of having you all vote the re-presenting only to not have the charter change go through, right? That becomes a problem within itself. It's kind of like the carp for the horse. So that, that's how I envision it, is that you all will probably have to contemplate based on what we have right now, Merrily, I, I think alluded to this, is we don't even have the final numbers. So it, it's, we're working in a, in a hypothetical of a hypothetical situation right now, which can always make things difficult. So, so what we're, yeah, what we're talking about is really just trying to come up with a solution. We are still exploring, and Merrily, i- it is a hail mary. We are still exploring the, the possibility of the twelve precincts, but you know, it, it didn't sound promising in either of the people I spoke to at the Secretary of State. No, I, I didn't hear back from the Attorney for the Secretary of State today on my email, Merrily. But I'm sure we will follow up with them. Part of what I had inquired about was due to the complexity of this and the possibility that it will require a charter change, is there some form of an exemption that we can seek if we show that we're in the process of seeking that change or have already voted on something or have something before you all or the state legislature? So I'm, I'm trying to explore all those what-if options so that you guys can focus your efforts on what you want to do in terms of the charter change. Or if we're lucky enough, you know, the hail mary comes through and we have a Doug Flutie-type moment, then, then I'm fine with that. But I, I don't know that that's likely. So that, that's, I, I, you know, I think you all need to probably focus on the charter change part of it and, and concentrate your efforts on that because we know how that process can go. So you know, and once we get that process down, we'll, we'll try to make the, the rest work, but there's a lot of moving parts, as you can see.
I, I would just add that even for the future, I think a charter change is necessary. You're always going to have this. If you're putting a number beside the districts for the councillors, you're always gonna, gonna have something that's going to have to be changed because it's not gonna. So if you say something like each district should have a councillor, and there should be sufficient at-large councillors to make it an odd number, then you can say in your administrative code, which is much easier to change, how many councillors you want or something like that. It'll just make it much easier when re-presenting has to happen. So.
If I still have the floor, Mr. President, yeah, I, I agree. I think, and to what Councillor Gallagher said, I would like to see us stay at nine as well. I don't really want to see our number go up. But if it's going to six and three type of situation, or four or five possibly, but I think if, if the goal would definitely be to keep it at nine. And then my other question too, Merrily, as you mentioned, potentially increasing ballot boxes for a one A and a one B. Can, can we have voters from a one A and one B vote into the same box, or does it need to be separate?
No, voting is, remember the, the facts at the very beginning, and you can go back and look at it. I know we went through it quickly, but voting is done by precinct. So you, it will always, you'll always be voting in precinct one A or one B or one C. But we, we can't combine them. We can combine them into a district, but voting isn't done by districts. Voting is done by precincts.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Councillor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Merrily, for your hard work. I know it's been the extremely difficult task for you to contend with at this point. I'm wondering, would it be possible for the council to obtain a, basically a, a static map, not a, nothing GIS, but a map of the census districts, and perhaps we could arrange for an overlay of the existing district lines on that so we could better comprehend the composition of our districts?
A map, a map with the census blocks within the districts, within, within the precincts?
Yes.
That's what you're saying? So a map with the precincts marked out and then, and then the census. I can ask for that. I don't know. I certainly don't have it. I don't, they haven't offered to send it. And, and I, I'm a little skeptical about how helpful it is, Councillor Chase, because just looking at the census block shape doesn't necessarily tell you how many people are in it, that you're going to move it to someplace else. So it might be some, one of our places that's rural and, and it looks bigger, like maybe it has more people in it, or maybe, maybe it's where access is, and I don't know how they do it. I don't know if they do the census blocks by population and are making them equitable to other census blocks. I just don't know that, and I haven't been able to get that information.
Right. I, I understand, and I, I would suppose that in the best case, to make that work, to make it useful for us, we would need to have a, a separate schedule that actually identifies the population within each. And again, I don't know if that's an ask that is reasonable, but it might be something worth considering.
I can and will ask. And then I just warn you again, we're one of three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, and I don't know how many of them are asking the Donahue Institute and the Secretary for, for the GIS services, but I'm guessing a bunch. And so we, we can't, it isn't the kind of thing that we can just send them an email in the morning and get the results. The things I asked them for, the precinct twelve, I asked them for a week ago, and we still haven't got, or the twelve precincts, we still haven't gotten that back yet. So it takes some time. And you guys are going to be on a tight timeline when we get those final numbers. You've got a month from that time to have something that's going to be approved.
I understand. Yeah. Thank you very much for your answers.
Any other questions from any members of the council? Councillor George.
Thank you, Mr. President, for you to the Town Clerk. First off, reiterate, thank you very much for all of the work that you've put into, and I can only imagine the hours that we're put in for the analysis. Just a general question. So we're, we're talking about a charter change, and maybe actually this is to the Town Attorney. So just for clarification, in this particular instance, where the council will be ultimately charged to make this charter change because this is a state mandated change? Am I correct on that? Or is this something where if the voters decided they wanted input and final approval, we would have to take that into consideration?
Well, I think just based on how the special act actually technically works, oftentimes you all send it back to the voters for kind of the belts and suspenders form of a special act. But I think in this context, a vote by you all to send it to the legislature whereby it's approved there doesn't necessarily need to require the caveat that you guys usually attach that says, when it gets back and approved by the state legislature, we're going to put it on the ballot. This is, this is probably one of those things where, you know, within your discretion, of course, you, you may want to think about not doing that because now you're, you're just adding time. And, and I'm not sure it really changes anything, right? Because at some point, as you can see, based on the mandate that's provided to us by the state, it has to happen, right? So there, there is a level of discretion you all have, but the level of discretion has to fall within the parameters of this has to happen, right? And so that, that's why it may not be appropriate after hopefully it's approved as a special act. We get it up to the State House and we talk to, you know, our people in the State House to push this through because I think it needs to happen. You know, it may not be something that, that voters need to weigh in on because it has to happen.
And, and I totally understand that and appreciate the point. I guess the only thing, and I will have more discussion on that, is it seems like we have multiple options. We, we have to make a change. I think that is pretty apparent, and we have no option. It's really just informing people that the option that we decide, if it's approved by the legislature, it does become a charter change without being it put in front of the voters. I, I, I'm not trying to debate if we have to make the change. I'm, it's pretty apparent. But if, if we But if if we have three choices and we choose one.
Yep.
But you have a group that says, well, we'd rather have two.
Yep.
You know, we need people to understand that in this particular case, what we decide. For all intents and purposes, is what's going to be proposed to legislature and if they approve it, that's what's going to be enacted.
And and I think that's completely allowable under our form of government. I think in the past, the reason things have gone to the voters is they've been issues of discretion, right? And they've been issues that, you know, that you all want citizens to weigh in on. And while citizen input is obviously important and certainly they can partake in in the, you know, open meeting process at your meetings about this. I think it has to happen. So at the end of the day, as opposed to having a master, you know, appointed for us. Who then, you know, there's no representative or other input. I think it's better to have the representative input, which is your form of government, right? You guys are representatives for your constituents. So I I think, you know, it's it's going to be a very tight window. Mary Lee is absolutely right. It's very difficult to even figure it out at this point because we don't even have the final census numbers. And the fact that and we have explored, in case this question comes up. We have tried to explore the notion of splitting the census block at BSU, right? I mean, Mary Lee and I had that conversation. I've sought some counsel from a counterpart who's the attorney for the Elections Division at the Secretary of State. And it's it's a possibility, but the timing, it would take years. Literally to get the federal government to recognize the split of the census block at BSU. So we're trying everything. I mean, I don't think any stone's been left unturned. And certainly if any of you all create a computer algorithm to figure this out, I'm all for it. But, you know, it's it's complicated at best.
Well, hopefully the legislature is the eighty the eighty-two Miami defense and that hail Mary works. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Any other council members with a questions? Okay, see, and then Mary Lee, again, thank you for all of your time, effort and energy in presenting this high level overview for us tonight. I think that it's important, you know, at least for me as Council President to say to you that, you know, rather than having to sit and wait at Citizens Open Forum. As our town clerk working on a very important issue. That you work with me week to week to make sure that you have room on the agenda ongoingly through this process. As the Attorney Rollins has stated, you know, it's a quick timeline, but without the chance to bring it to people for a vote. The only way we can keep people informed is by having regular updates of the various options that are on the table. So I'll work with you to make sure that you have that space on our agenda to keep the council and the community informed as we narrow in on a, you know, final plan moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, President Rush, and I really appreciate that. What I know, you will know when I know it. And I'm always open to hear from any of the counselors. Email me and let me know what you think your preferences are. I don't know that we can meet them, but when I know that it helps me focus on where we want to go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Town Managers Report. Start with the Mitchell School update.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. My thankfully, my first two items at least are pretty benign, which coming on the heels of trying to redistrict and create precincts is. A good thing. The Mitchell School update work continues as planned and and on schedule. Steel continues to go up and the concrete decking is in the process of being poured. There have been no reported neighbor complaints this week. The topping off ceremony is being planned for the next sometime within the next couple of weeks. And a school group will be invited to come and write write notes on the on the top beam. Which is a tradition that that dates back quite some time. They happy to know that the contractor and the OPM are focused on dust control, especially during the hot weather. Which tends to aggravate the dust, so they are trying to be right on top of that. As I mentioned, the timeline is still good. The projected completion date is July of 2022. Ready for September occupancy of 2022. And and that is that is essentially all I have to report. The as I often always say, the BridgewaterSchoolProject.com is the place to go for all the information and progress pictures. Pictures have recently been posted there, so if anybody's interested in seeing pictures of the progress, that's where to go again. WWW.BridgewaterSchoolProject.com. And that's what I have, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the members of the council? Okay, see, and none, moving on to our next item, COVID-19 update.
COVID-19 update, I'm happy to report we have three active cases, that is it, in Bridgewater right now. Three reported active cases. And two of those are coming to the end of the 14 day period, so we'll be down to one again as we were a couple of weeks ago. BSU's vaccination site is up and running, does not require a sign up, you can just simply walk down. In terms of Bridgewater percentages, percentages of residents who've been vaccinated. About 54% have at least one dose and somewhere above 40% have been fully vaccinated. I will point out that we lag a little bit behind most other Plymouth County towns in terms of vaccination rates. But we are ahead of several towns as well, so we're right in the mix. But but again, vaccination site right at BSU, so folks can go down and get vaccinated. So happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Counsel Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to ask a few questions about the ARPA Fund, which is COVID-19 related, I assume? Or should we add that as a separate category? I just like to ask some questions about that.
Sure.
It's just I I attended the Plymouth County Advisory Board Budget Meeting last week and we got an update from the county treasurer regarding the ARPA funds. And he advised us that we've already received a chunk of money from the ARPA. Funds that have been released, is that correct? No?
I I don't think we have not, the town has not received any funding as of yet. I don't know if if they've been allocated to the town, that may be, but we haven't received any funding.
From from my understanding, the use of the ARPA fund, which is totally separate from the COVID-19. Monies that 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 we've been getting reimbursed for, it's totally separate.
Right.
Is that some of that monies can be used for for projects in the town. That relate to health and safety. Needs of the community. So, you know, perhaps, and this I believe it's a large pot of money that. We're earmarked for, I believe, I don't know the exact number. It's just something to look into because. You know, if we're gonna move forward with a fire station. Perhaps as an element of that funds that can be set aside. Or the HVAC system of that new fire station, for example. To save the taxpayers some money when we have to go out and do a debt exclusion. And. With the elementary school that's being built on South Street. You perhaps to save the taxpayers some money on the borrowing of all that. That some of the ARPA monies monies could be used for HVAC in that building or even water and sewer tie ups that are gonna go in. I don't know if this if it's too late to intercept. To have that used for that purpose. But I believe what I was hearing from the county officials is it can be. If it's health and safety. Related for projects undertaken by communities down Massachusetts. I just throw it out there, it I'm sure you're aware of it. I was brought aware of it last week and and I think it's significant because if it saves this saves the taxpayers of Bridgewater money. It's from money coming in from the federal government, which is taxpayers' money anyway, would be good. That's all I have, I just wanted to bring that up there.
No. And and we do have, we have had some information flow from the county, but I think you got sort of a preview of what all the area towns and cities. Finance directors are planning on getting some time later this week. So I think I think we'll have a little bit more information at that point. But but you're absolutely right, we have a number of projects that we think those funds will be eligible to to offset. And those include, you know, obviously, we're well well along on the water treatment plant. But sewer sewer plant upgrade is certainly looming there. That's a sizable expense and then and then as Counsel Gallagher points out, so it's a fire station and so on. You know, plenty of plenty of projects that we have lined up that that we could potentially offset with some of this funding. So true.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counsel Colin Bodas?
I would just push back on Counsel Gallagher's suggestion that we divert. Federal funds to offset school costs. I think our 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 rate of borrowing on the the bond for the school is quite low, is that right?
It is historically low, correct?
Right, and and I would suggest that we've got a lot of what. Mayor Giuliani referred to as deferred maintenance in our infrastructure. And then we've got a lot of outstanding costs that 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 really should be met. And that we should use federal funds to address those costs. And given that the taxpayers are really getting quite a deal on the borrowing for the school, that we should sit tight with that. And and not shortchange other infrastructure, townwide infrastructure projects. That's all.
Any other questions from any other councilors? Or comments? Okay, see, and none, moving on to item C, update on facilities.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna try something we have not yet tried. So we have a report from Chris Hartman, who's our facilities director. As and by way of introduction, I think, as you know, the the we hired Chris last end of last year. He's hit the ground running with really two basic charges. One is fix, you know, let's let's try to fix what's broken. And to conduct a more comprehensive assessment of all the maintenance and capital needs through throughout the town. So let me tee up Chris and I will share my screen. Just momentarily. And let him. All right, hold on just a moment. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, what are you seeing? Yeah, are you seeing Chris?
Yeah, looks good.
All right, here he goes, hope it works. Can you hear that? Can you hear him?
No, no, no volume.
All right, hold on. Well, I apologize, we were having technical difficulties and I thought this was. We were going to. This was going to work perfectly. Well, if if I can. I do apologize, we had about we have about a 10 minute presentation from Chris. But so I can. So I can do a better job of it if the council wouldn't mind deferring this to the to the June 29th meeting. We will. Get this teed up, so it's a better presentation, so I apologize for that. I will.
Absolutely.
All right.
I think we'll go ahead and move to Old Town Hall update.
All right, apologize for that.
Mr. President, one second, please, if I may. Counsel Souza.
I thought my original request was that Chris come before the council to make this presentation in person. So that if any of the council members had questions for him, we could get them answered at that time. I mean, it's been a number of months that he's been on the job and it's an awful lot of things in town that we all know have to be worked on. Is is what it is, cost and possible schedule. And and I don't know if that's going to be all included in a 10 minute presentation. But eliminates our opportunity to ask him any question by just showing a tape. I prefer that he comes before us.
Counsel Souza, I apologize, I think we incorporate as part of the update. He's unavailable tonight and we did our best to try to pre-record it for you, so at least to give you an update. I think now that the technology didn't work, we'll certainly move him under presentations and have him actually do the presentation in person. And to your point, be able to respond to a number of questions, if that's okay with the town manager.
That is, that is perfect, yep. That is perfect.
Okay. Any other comments before we move on to the next item?
For just for point of order, so I think that's perfectly fine. And certainly you all need to have updates on that so that you can budget properly. But obviously, you all know the charter and the direction of an employee under the employee of the town manager is a violation of the charter. So I just would be very careful with those conversations.
Absolutely. Are you saying it's still okay to have him come before us though and give an actual presentation on the presentations? Just be careful in the line of questioning.
Yeah, sure, I I think it's perfectly acceptable. You all need to know what the maintenance, what's needed on the maintenance of buildings so that you can budget and appropriate funds. And that all makes perfect sense. I just want to be careful that this doesn't become something about the employee of an employee and and his job responsibilities, that's all.
Understood, thank you. Counsel Colin Bodas?
To Town Attorney Rollins, Mr. Rollins, would it be appropriate then for the town council to express certain policy outcomes? Regarding buildings as opposed to specifically directing an employee of the town?
Sure, you guys you guys make policy, so you can express whatever policy outcomes you'd like. But the more appropriate method of expressing a policy outcome is through budgeting appropriations, resolutions, orders. But yeah, I mean, I I think you guys make policy, so that's fine. I just I it's always a precarious situation when a department head who's under the employee of the town manager comes before the council, which is perfectly fine. But has to face questions about his employment potentially. And that's where, oh, no, yeah, and I'm not saying you were gonna do that, Counselor Souza. I was actually just setting the parameters now so that it goes smoothly. That's that's really my only point in in speaking to this.
Right, so it'd be appropriate for the council to order a certain outcome and then contingent on the town manager to translate that into a directive to an employee, right?
That's it, it's too vague of a question. It'd have to be more certainly asked. I I would never make a general blanket statement like that. So, yeah, I mean, I I think it's, again, I think it's totally acceptable for department heads to during those discussions. Have conversations about what's, you know, wrong, what's crumbling, what needs to be fixed. I get all of that and and that's that's perfectly fine. My only point in bringing that up is when a department head comes before you all, I just want to be careful that we don't cross over those lines of. You know, that that he has the understanding that he's the employee of the town manager and not the town council, right? And so that that's the important distinction, that's all.
Be mostly a one way communication, him reporting facts to us.
I think so, yeah, because at the end of the day, then you guys can legislate or create policy on, you know, whatever you want, so long as it doesn't cross that boundary. That's right.
Got it.
Yep, no problem.
Understood, thank you. I just follow up, Counsel Souza, if you could, just reach out to the town manager specifically if you have items. I certainly was under the impression as a new employee, he has done an assessment of town own property and was gonna provide the update. Or at least an assessment overview to the town council so that we can then target priorities in town through the town manager.
Correct, that's what he was gonna do, but we will we will have him at the at the June 29th meeting and I think that would be appropriate. You can ask all kinds of questions and help where the status of different things lies, so that would be good.
Okay, moving on, Old Town Hall.
Old Town Hall is, as council remembers, in late 2019, we had engaged a company by the name of Arts Market. And they worked in conjunction with Epstein Jocelyn Architects and they were studying the feasibility of converting the Old Town Hall. Into into something that would house cultural and community uses. They were somewhat hampered during the pandemic, but at the end of the day, they really did a pretty spectacular. But at the end of the day, they really did a pretty spectacular amount of public outreach, all things considered, to determine that those potential, to determine whatever potential uses. And they, they also did a fairly extensive assessment of regional need for regional cultural arts and community uses centers. We received the final report in March. And I have asked the Bridgewater Cultural Council and a small group of ad hoc committee members to to review the work done and make recommendations on moving forward. Our timeline, I met with a cultural council, I believe it was last week. And and I will be going back to them to have a more thorough discussion about about the findings. The report can be found on the website and just, again, I will quickly share the screen so that you can see what the report looks like. It can be found. It can be found if you just go into the search bar and you type in Old Town Hall, it pops right up. But it, it has been issued the, the most well, the condensed version is in the executive summary. And it just goes through some of the findings and recommendations. They do find that Bridgewater residents are strongly in favor of repurposing Town Hall as a cultural center. They also find that additional property that will be vacated once the fire station is built and and moves out of that location. A good percentage were in favor of of using at least some of that property as part of sort of an additional outdoor space to the, to the current Town Hall property. They, they got good interest in things such as farmer's market, pop up retail and so forth. And then, and then sort of further down the road, a lot of interest in a restaurant as as sort of a opportunity or test kitchen, teaching kitchen for folks in that in that location as well. So that was, that is, I encourage you to read, read it. I think we sent, tried to send a copy or we gave hard copies to the council. But it is easily found on the website and you can go through. I'll just give you a very quick. You know, these are sort of estimated construction costs for meeting the needs of the building. So if you're looking there, the whole, the whole project is at about a $6.6 million price tag. They also make recommendations about funding. And you can see those right there. So they've estimated through grant funding about a 5.3, almost $5.4 million figure. So so there are grant opportunities that that are available. And so, as I mentioned, the cultural council will be looking quite carefully at this. And we will regroup with them next month to to just make sure that they agree with some of the findings of the studies. I will say, having read the study quite thoroughly, it does. It was a really good study. It takes into account the opportunity zone and references some of the benefits of that and some of the opportunities that that we might have in additional fundraising and and economic development components to to the project. So so that is that is essentially where that stands right now. The council voted a $30,000 match to a $30,000 Mass Cultural Council grant award to fund the feasibility study. And and I, as I say, I'm, you know, having, having been the recipient of a number of these types of studies and feasibility studies and so forth, this was a particularly thorough and a particularly good one that really ventured out to get plenty of public, public input at a, at a particularly difficult time as well. So so that is, that's essentially where the, the Town Hall, the Old Town Hall project stands right now. They will, once the cultural council reviews it, once ad hoc committee sort of finishes a more thorough review, we'll be coming back to the council to make a proposal on moving forward. And so that we probably will look forward to sometime in the early fall. So but happy to, happy to answer questions.
Thank you, councillor Moore.
Through you to the town manager, I'm just curious. If you look at studies about downtown revitalization, a lot of them talk about the need for an anchor venue. And typically, they repurpose Town Halls into performance venues. And it, and it's a sort of like a critical piece in this larger strategic puzzle for for revitalization. So I'd just be curious, you know, as we're looking at uses, certainly, community ideas are great. But I want to make sure that we're also tying the repurposing of that building to a larger vision. And I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about how we're making that connection in this study or maybe as a next step.
The, that's a great question. The study does sort of spell out some of the, the economic, well, spells out in in some particular detail, the economic benefits of of this particular renovation or or repurposing of of a building. We also have had some fairly extensive discussions with Bridgewater State University on how, how they can be more of a potential be a little more visible in the center of town and how they can bring some of their students and staff up to the center of town. I think, I think everybody knows that economic development in in a town our size, especially in the downtown area, largely depends on try, you know, foot traffic, bicycle traffic, you know, something other than through traffic going through through Central Square. So so this kind of, this kind of use for that building is designed to to really bring people into town. It's designed potentially to bring students and staff up from from the BSU campus, which is only a stone's throw away. And is designed to be sort of a gathering point. And once you design that gathering point and once you encourage people and once people actually start coming, your, your downtown businesses have a market built in. And you tend to see more thriving, small business community. So so that, that's sort of just very briefly, you know, the, the, the point behind the intended use of that building, at least the intended use spelled out in the feasibility study. We did ask very specifically, you know, is, does this work? We asked the consultant very specifically, does this work as part of an economic redevelopment of downtown? And I think once, once you read through the report, she answers that that question, I think, pretty, pretty clearly.
Councillor George.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager. So I did review the report. Where, where I'm a little fuzzy is, and maybe it, it's fuzzy because it's still a lot of moving parts. As you mentioned earlier, that there's a tie in with the proposal for a new fire station or stations. What I didn't get is a sense that would we be able to move forward on work on the building and not have to wait for the movement of the fire station? And the reason for that is it's, I, I think from a practical perspective, it's going to take a while. If we move forward on the, on the new fire station, substation, it's going to take a while for those to to really get into play. That building is not getting any younger. And what I'd hate to see is that particular part, the old fire station, being the linchpin for any work and use of that building. So I don't know if you, if, if you have the answer for that or if that's something we come back and talk about again. But I feel like, you know, you still have to go through your process with the cultural council and the ad hoc committee. But i- if, if we've got this tied into the old fire station lot, that we're going to be stuck in the mud potentially for a long time. We need to get around that, if at all possible.
Now, that's, that's a great, great point. And I think, I think you, you sort of hit on a key point. At least in the consultant's report, they're really identified the fire station location as being, at at the very least, a place where we we can put in a required elevator. Because no matter what you do in this building, it's going to require an elevator. So so there is there is a portion of where the fire station sits now would have to be, would have to be consumed with the elevator. So so the question about what you could actually do in that building, what kind of work you could do in that building without having the fire station moved out of there and at least a portion of it torn down is a good question. And that's one we'll address, you know, as we're, we're going through the process with cultural council.
Thank you.
Councillor Colin Bodas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to respond to councillor Moore's concern that the project be tied in with a larger economic development concerns. I just want to read a sentence from the report. "The arts are one of the few industries that stimulate a range of offsite spending in association with onsite spending across a range of other economic sectors." I think there's a lot of evidence that cultural and and art and the arts are really, have a profound multiplier effect on the local economy. And so I'm, I'm, I feel quite well assured that, that, you know, a culture or artistic use for the building would really have significant positive fill over effects for the rest of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? Okay, seeing none. Moving on, Broad Street Development.
All right. Well, Mr. President, I can give you a little bit of of background and update on the Broad Street development. I can't, I can't unfortunately tell you what is going to happen there. But I I do want to sort of address a lot of the misconceptions about how the revised zoning affected the the planning board decision on on that particular project, the Broad Street. I'm talking about the Broad Street redevelopment project or whatever it's called. In any case, under, under zoning section 19, which allows mixed use in the central business district, there was a subsection 1904, which is relatively new. Council voted that, I believe, in September of 2018. And it, it defines the number of residential units allowed by right and the CBD is 18 units. So that's 18 units per acre. So that's, that's what is is allowed in a mixed use development by right. However, it does also allow the planning board to increase that density up to 26 units per acre under certain circumstances. And those are essentially referred to as bonus, it's referred to as bonus density. And if the developer proposes, you know, such things that that are, you know, favorable to the town in in terms of development, such as his, you know, preserving historic structures or supporting affordable housing through the Affordable Housing Trust or making streetscape improvements or installing solar panels or or what have you, then the planning board can grant an extra number of units over and above the 18 units per acre limit up to a max of 26 units per acre. So there is a provision in there and it does allow, it actually, well, it allows the developer, if the developer is proposing streetscape improvements for any additional bonus units, then it requires, it actually requires the town manager, the CDC, CED director to negotiate what's referred to as a developers' agreement in the zoning. And that developers' agreement has to be submitted prior to to the, or actually submitted with the, the, actually, it is prior to the special permit application. But regardless, as part of that agreement, then we are also supposed to recommend how many additional bonus units should be granted based upon the work that that the developer is proposing. You know, the extra work is sort of the community benefit work that the developers is is proposing. So so in this in this particular development, we had negotiated a streetscape agreement, which would have granted up to a total, up to a total of 17 one and two bedroom residential units. And and would have, so that the, the, the project itself would have maxed out at, I think, 67 units, 67 one and two bedroom units. The planning board, I think, as everybody knows, approved 62 units. And he, developers indicated that he is almost certain that he would not proceed to construct the project at 62 units, arguing that that doesn't make economic sense to him. But I can tell you, I, we have not heard anything from him over the last probably two and a half weeks or so. So so I don't know where his head is right now, but I can tell you that he has told a number of people in town that that he is almost certain he would not proceed with that 62 unit. That's certainly not, not a secret. So I will, you know, just sort of address, because the zoning changed in 2018 and because we had negotiated this, this developers' agreement, which is is a component of that zoning, there were some, I think, in town that thought there was some kind of nefarious agreement going on. And really, nothing could be further from the the truth on that. It's, it's a process laid out in the new zoning. It's, I know many people don't like, including a number of planning board members, don't like that process. But that is what's laid out in the zoning. Certainly, as we move forward, that's something that could change if 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 we choose to to change that that zoning. But but I I will say that that negotiation and that developers' agreement is is certainly not a public process. But it is a mandated process under that particular provision of of the zoning. So I, the only thing I would say about changing that provision, I don't know that it's going to come into use anytime soon again. But if that is, if somebody on, on the council or otherwise wants to propose a revision to that piece of zoning, I I would only suggest that we not do that until the recodification of the current zoning has been approved, just mostly to avoid the confusion. Recodification is, is, as you know, currently sitting in, in, I believe, on rules and procedures. I can't remember the committee, but it is sitting in committee, waiting to, or no, committee and Economic Development Committee waiting for some, some review there. So that would be my only suggestion. But that's, that's really all I have on the Broad Street development. I don't, don't have any insider information, so to speak. But that's, that's what I have and I'm happy to answer a question.
Councillor Wood.
Thank you to you, to the town manager. So I I have to agree with you that there were a lot of problems with the bonus program. And we will certainly be taking a look at that. I don't want to dive into any details now. But we learned a lot over the past eight months, right? So but but related to all that, there was the grant that we saw last week. And and Broad Street right there needs some new crosswalks and some other safety features. So how long do we wait to implement those, waiting for the developer to take action? Or can we, do we take action now and hope that we improve things as we go forward as the development proceeds?
A great question. I think we are on a process to do the Broad Street and Main Street improvements, as as you saw last meeting. If nothing has been started or there's no evidence that that development will begin by the time that our process starts, then we will proceed to go ahead and and do the work that's laid out in the Complete Streets Grant approval. And if the developer chooses to go and and do work under the approved planning board decision and that planning board decision somehow also includes the developers' agreement on Broad Street, then we'll, we'll reallocate. You know, we'll sit down and just have that discussion with the developer about reallocating, you know, the resources that would have gone to the specific, you know, crosswalks and and curb extensions and so forth in order for us to just reallocate that same amount of work in another location, preferably on Broad Street, because that's sort of the focus that we want to, you know, make the improvements on.
Okay, any other question? Councillor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll through you to Mr. Dutton. Michael, on the development agreement, is there a timeframe in which that's known void?
I think by its terms, it was 10 years. A 10 year agreement, the agreement itself, I believe, was 10 years. And then I think within the agreement, there were other provisions that that terminated sooner than than that. So.
So even if he I mean, I think that's a problem right there. But I, 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 I just, I'm disappointed that the project hasn't gone full. I mean, I think that's a problem right there, but I, 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 I just, I'm disappointed that the project hasn't gone forward. In my opinion, difference of five units. You know, I questioned whether he was ever going to go forward anyway. But I'm disappointed that we've, we've seemed to kind of held back on a lot of needed infrastructure needs in our center of town because of this. And if, if we do move forward with some of these projects that need to be done, isn't there any way we could renegotiate some of the terms in there if he ever does start developing? Or is that?
Oh, absolutely.
You could just reimburse us at that point or something like that?
Absolutely. I think that's a better way to put what I was trying to say to Counselor Wood. If, if he, if we do the work, because the work, you know, is in, is now lined up and we're on a, on a critical path. Once we do that work, then that, that those provisions will have to be renegotiated. And presumably, the Planning Board would have to, have to bless those, you know, those, those renegotiations.
And also, I hope finally that somehow, some way, we can keep his feet to the fire to keep that property looking as decent as possible while it just sits there. That's all I have.
Just a clarification, President. I believe it is two, two years to act on the approval from a planning board. So the ten years for the overall project, the two years is for the, after the planning board.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the notion of lapsing special permits is a complicated area of why. I, I think we steer clear of that for right now, but, but you're right, it's not. There, there is a shorter timeframe than, than an agreement. You have to act on a special permit within a certain amount of time. That is correct.
Thank you. Counselor Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an aside to what was mentioned about the upkeep of the property. I know going back when I was on the council prior, we had discussions. And, and I think certain resolutions might have been created about the upkeep of these properties. And right now, it's really in a tremendous state of overgrowth and it looks really, really bad. Is there any way we can hold their feet to the fire right now as far as cleaning up the property? Because with the, the spring growth, it's looking really bad and overgrown. So I don't know if there's anything that we can do to motivate them to at least mow down and clean up some of that area, you know? Because the other thing I noted too, before the decision of the planning board came out, is he put four sale signs up on the property. So again, alluding back to what Mr. Gallagher said, you know, what's his, you know, original intention was to follow through with this project or not. And I do find it hard to believe that five units would make or break a project that's taken them a number of years to get to this point in time.
We will, I'll reach out to the, the building official and we'll see what we can do to, to try to get that property cleaned up.
Thank you.
Councilor Wood.
Through you to, to town manager. I would be curious, so back to my earlier comment about, you know, revitalizing a downtown takes a strategy. There are a lot of towns that have tried and failed and a lot of towns that have been successful. And the successful towns have created this recipe of this mixed use, high-density residential development, coupled with some of these other changes we've talked about. So I would be curious, you know, I think a lot of us were looking at that at this specific project as the start of that larger strategy. And now that it looks like it won't happen, are there other, you know, possibilities on the horizons? On the horizon, I'm thinking of the Perkins property or maybe the McElwain School, where we can sort of pivot that strategy to one of these other, you know, programs to keep momentum on this downtown economic change.
Great question. And your mention of the McElwain School allows me to let the council know that that, that that closed, that project closed on Friday, which is a good thing. That means that the project is now financed and the school is actually owned by, by the development team that proposed the renovation and redevelopment of that property. So they intend to move fairly quickly and because they need to and want to. So you will see some action on that property fairly quickly. The Perkins property, I know that, that the proponents of that potential property have, have visited a couple of town boards already. And I know they've been working with Jennifer Burke, the Community and Economic Development Director, a little bit. And I think, I think Counselor Woods District, it's in Counselor Woods District. So I think they've been talking a little bit with us about potential zoning change that would, that would be necessary for them to construct something along the lines of what they've, they've sort of given the council in past meetings. So, you know, the visuals that they've given the council in the past meetings. So, so I think those are, are moving along. Those are obviously not as centrally located as the, the property on Broad Street that we're talking about. But, but there is an opportunity to, to move forward on, on those certainly. One is, is essentially underway and the other one, it will be coming to you and, and the Planning Board for a zoning change.
Thank you. Counselor Wood.
Just quickly, since, since the town manager mentioned the McElwain School in opening up the topic.
I think we're veering off path because one, one of those things could have potentially come or may potentially come before you. So I think this was about the Broad Street development and I think we should probably stick within those parameters. I was actually saying that last part of that, I probably would have preferred we defer to a different town manager report.
He doesn't need to tell me now. I just need to know what the density per acre is on the McElwain School. You can do that in an email.
Okay, any other questions for town manager? Okay, moving on, items for the next meeting. Is there anything from the council you want to mention now to the town manager for the next meeting? Okay, seeing none, if you could please reach out directly and coordinate that. We'll move on to discussions. We have none. Committee reports, Council Clerk Selection Ad Hoc Committee update to further Counselor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to provide to the council of a brief update with respect to our status. The, the ad hoc committee to select a, a, a new council clerk conducted our second meeting last week, which we think was very productive. It was attended by the full committee together with the Assistant Town Manager and Ann Holmberg, who was invited to attend as well. And both the Assistant Town Manager and Ann were, did provide to us extremely valuable input. We focused primarily on approving a form of job description for that particular position. And we, we moved that ahead and asked the assistants of the Assistant Town Manager, Kim Williams, to kindly go ahead with that for publication purposes. And she was extremely helpful in providing us some important practical and, and legal points that we needed to be mindful of, as well as to acquaint us with the overall hiring practice followed by the town. We discussed the, the blind screen that would be established in order to, you know, assure that the candidates are evaluated without any consideration of their identity or, or any other factor. We did discuss the process going ahead and also some attributes that we felt would be particularly important for successful candidates. So all in all, it was very productive. We agreed that I would provide to you this brief update tonight. And it was suggested that at our next meeting, next council meeting, that is, on, on the twenty ninth of June, that we provide a discussion item so that the, the full council can be drawn in a little more inclusively to this important topic, since it, it very directly obviously impacts each of us. So that is really the extent of my update, unless there are any questions.
Any questions from the council? Counselor Perry.
Thank you. Counselor Chase, so did you state, so have you not officially listed the job position out there yet? And if not, how soon do you think the position will be listed?
I believe that, and I wish I could say this with complete assurance, but I believe that the, the job posting is already public. I can't say offhand the extent to which, in other words, I can't say whether it's actually been published, you know, beyond through town resources at this point. But nonetheless, I know that, you know, there was a, we simply did rely upon Ms. Williams to provide to us some, more or less some stylistic input that she could provide in order to make that application or to make that ad, as it were, for the position. Make it very much conform to the style of job opportunity announcements that the town is accustomed to publishing. So again, very minor and I think stylistic changes. But that was really the only impediment to getting the word out immediately. So I suspect by this point, it already is, and I'll certainly follow up with the Assistant Town Manager to determine that.
Thank you. Counselor Chase, I did view it on the town's website during your presentation. So the position is posted and appears to be elevated to full time, which is important going forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the town council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for that update, Counselor Chase. Moving on to legislation for action. A, excuse me, the first one, R F Y twenty one dash zero zero nine, Future Retail Sale of Marijuana Guidelines Resolution. This measure was not
I'm sorry, sorry.
That's okay. This measure was not referred to a committee. Fourteen days has elapsed per section eighteen of the council rules and procedures. Therefore, this measure may be finally be considered this evening.
Point of information? So, looking, looking at what's in our packet, I believe at our last council meeting, we approved striking the last sentence in the final paragraph. It's still in our packet. So can I just get a verification that we're voting on? If it does pass, we'll not have that last sentence. It will be, it'll be struck? Okay.
So, so there was, Counselor George, to your point, there was some discussion early this evening. I had asked for a clarification based on what I was seeing in the meeting minutes versus what I believe to be what occurred in the last meeting in terms of vote. So I believe the town manager just put up the actual resolution as voted. So if you wanted to take over the screen, just so that all of the councils, I think it's important that we know exactly what we're voting on. So I want to clarify that. And if there's any confusion, I really don't want to bull for a vote if I don't have to. But if the town manager could share it.
I'll make a motion to, to approve as displayed.
Okay, do I hear a second for discussion?
I would second that motion.
Counselor Wood and Counselor Chase. Counselor Wood, anything to add?
Thank you, yeah. You know, there's
Counselor Wood, I apologize. I just, in light of the time, it's nine forty four. I would just ask that if, if council members want to discuss or have discussion on this resolution, that we attempt not to repeat some of the messaging that we heard quite extensively at the last meeting. So hopefully, it's, it's points that are new that add to the discussion and not drag it unnecessarily. Go ahead, the floor is yours.
At the national level, if you watch the news, there's still people confused about the November election. And I, I think we can, this is simply as, as the comments at the beginning of the meeting said. This is simply, simply to recognize our most recent election and the question that was there. During the presentation tonight, you heard the two presenters say, we need to listen to community voices, and that was done by election. It's a slice of representation of population. If you look at the voting results, it's graphically quite widespread across Bridgewater. And, you know, the, the community stories are different depending on who you listen to. But, but this is not changing a lot, and it's simply a recognition of the vote from April. And I, I think that in that regard, that we should hopefully have a unanimous vote in favor of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just echo the comments of Counselor Wood. And we've had a lot of discussion and I, I don't think we need to reopen some of the topics. But, you know, I, I do think that the ballot question was fair and appropriate. The voter turnout on Election Day was not inconsistent with the town's past experience for town elections. The result on the question was favorable in terms of a passage of it, in other words, to allow retail sale of adult-use marijuana. And, you know, I point to the fact that I believe I did allude to it at one point previously that in my district personally, in District Four, that is, the vote was two to one in favor of retail sales. So, you know, without really getting back into the, pardon upon the weeds of it, I, I think that I would agree with Counselor Wood that we should proceed with a vote. And I'm hoping that it would be found, found in favor by the council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chase. Any other counselors for discussion? Counselor Gallagher.
Just a comment, Mr. President. To reiterate what I said last, last meeting, is that this is unusual. I mean, this is an unusual resolution to acknowledge one segment of an election. When we've had many, many elections in this town and there were other, other issues on the ballot that didn't get a resolution. There have been other elections in the town where we voted to support things. We voted to vote for people and nobody sponsored any specific resolution for those results. So and the town clerk has published and the results have been recognized and recorded as an official record of the town. So that's been acknowledged. So to put a resolution forward, this is an unusual request. It's an unusual resolution. Because if, if the town's going to go forward with this issue, the next step would be to put forth something. This doesn't put forth anything. So I just think it's, I just think it's an unusual request. It's out of the norm. I do recognize that that's what the vote was. I, I saw it that night. I've seen it on the town website. It'll be in the town reports. It'll be in official record. I don't think a resolution on a specific election result has been something that's been brought forward before in the past. That's just, that's just my take on this.
Thank you, Counselor Gallagher. Counselor Colin Bodas.
I'm willing to recognize that fifty seven percent of the voters who showed up that day support the sale of recreational marijuana. I would not, I think it's a leap to then suggest that the public at large supports the retail sale of recreational marijuana. I think the sample size is too small. So I think that, that the statement after the therefore is not a valid statement statistically. So I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Counselor Colin Bodas. Counselor Perry.
Thank you. Again, and this is kind of being addressing to any of the citizens that are listening here tonight. This isn't, you know, a decision either way, whether the town is going forward with retail marijuana sales or not. I believe this is just more of a, a statement of fact of what the result of this election was. It's, 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 it's something to, again, additionally putting into the record of what the result of the record of what the result of this election was. As Counsel Gallagher said, it is odd, but it's still another form of putting the statistics of this election into the record. But by no means does this stand for how the council, you know, is feeling on this issue. There's much more work and discussion that needs to be done on, you know, if retail marijuana happens or doesn't happen in town. It's not a stance for anyone on this particular panel. So I don't want people to feel that a vote on this tonight is a representation of how any of us feel on the particular item itself. It's just about whether we want to put this information into the record or not. At least that's how I'm taking the resolution as it is. But, you know, as also pointed out by Counsel Colm Botes just now, I wouldn't say that, you know, it's probably written completely accurately to the sense that, you know, it was barely over 50% the vote. I don't think it's a strong showing of support. I think it's a slight showing of support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Perry. Counsel Moore.
Yeah, I could just add to this. I think, I don't have as much history with this issue as I think the rest of the councillors. But I did receive emails, and we've heard in here, from people who don't believe that it's an accurate showing, that don't believe it's an accurate representation of the public. And so I think maybe to echo what's been said by others, you know, I think it's important for us to say that it is accurate, right? It's not a poll, right? A poll, 1,500 people in town would be an accurate poll for our population size, plus or minus 2% or 3%. But there's bias in the vote, right? So you can't poll our audience through a voting process. You have to respect the vote. So I do think it's important for us to make a statement about this, especially given some of the other comments about, you know, general concern about, you know, being able to trust a vote. This is a vote we can trust. It happened in town. I think we need to say that it happened in town and that we trust it.
Thank you, Counsel Moore. Any other councillors for any additional comments? Okay, seeing none, I reserved my comments 14 days ago. I'll just add to that. I don't personally like the precedent that this resolution really sets for us as a town council. If in fact that is the case, and that's how people feel, then we know that through the voting. I'm also not comfortable with the fact that this talks about, we've been informed that the public supports allowing the retail sales of recreational marijuana in Bridgewater, because in fact, other than one person tonight, I have not been contacted by any resident in town as an at-large councillor that favors or is in support of having recreational marijuana sales in the town of Bridgewater. We've spoken over the past over statistics. I'm not going to break down, you know, where these votes and whether it's an accurate representation or not. I'll just tell you what I have heard. And what I have heard is the residents don't want this in town. That's what I've heard. With that, I'll be voting no. So I'd like to move, unless there's any other additional comments, to a roll call vote. Seeing none. Josh, if we could, roll call vote, please.
Mr. George?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
No.
Mr. Souza?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colm Botes?
No.
I have four in favor, five against.
Okay, moving on to Resolution RFY 21-010, a resolution designating June 19th as a town holiday. This measure was not referred to a committee. Fourteen days has elapsed per Section 18 of the Council Rules and Procedures. Therefore, this measure may be finally be considered this evening to entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I would just add that as far as I'm concerned, I'm very happy to say, you know, even with our presentation earlier tonight, this is yet one more example of the work that the council is doing in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion, and supporting and incorporating Juneteenth as a town holiday for town employees. Counsel Colm Botes.
Yeah, I would just like to echo that. I think the ending of slavery in this country is something to be celebrated.
Any other councils? Okay, seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Colm Botes?
Yeah.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Moving to old business, there is none. New business, Order 0 FY 21-050, End of Year Transfers. Refer to the town manager.
Mr. President, this is sort of our standard, well, it is our standard year-end transfer request. And for those councillors or the public that does not know, traditionally, at the end of the year, we've got accounts that have not been spent, and we've got line items that have been overspent. So we correct those prior to the end of the fiscal year. So this is that effort to do, do just that.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance Committee?
Second. Second from any council? Counsel Gallagher.
I'll second.
Okay. Refer to a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colm Botes?
Yeah.
Nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Moving on, FY, excuse me, Order 0 FY 21-052, Transfer Order, Support of Diversity and Equity Inclusion Committee. Refer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. This appropriation request is designed to get very specific expertise in order for the ad hoc committee to do its work thoroughly and more comprehensively. So I think, as everybody knows here, I appointed a 10-member ad hoc Diversity and Inclusion Committee, which has been charged with recommending ways to improve, among other things, recommending ways to improve communication across town, breaking down some of those real and perceived barriers, and then engage in, try to engage traditionally unengaged populations in town, and then propose ways that the town can really better advocate for diversity, equity, and inclusion across the board. So this obviously reflects one of the council's goals, as well as my goal as town manager. And we've really got a spectacular group of citizens on the committee who have offered to donate their time and varied expertises to this effort. And for such a critical initiative, I do think we need some assistance to properly direct and guide the committee's work. So I encourage you to forward this on to Finance Committee and Budget and Finance and Review, and get it back to the council.
Thank you.
Motion to...
Right, Counsel George.
Yes. Motion to recommend to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
Second.
Excellent. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none from the council, I would say that I strongly support this effort. Hope it comes back as unanimous vote. Or for a roll call vote.
Mr. Colm Botes?
Yeah.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. We're going to need a motion to go beyond 10 o'clock.
So move.
Second.
Okay, I'll move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Colm Botes?
Yeah.
Nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Moving on, Order 0 FY 21-053, Transfer Order, Water, Curve Street Project. Refer to the town manager.
Mr. President, this transfer requests money out of the water reserve accounts, and we are doing this rather than going through the expense of short-term borrowing for this project. The bids, construction bids came in much lower than we had estimated. And so we feel it's better financed directly through our reserves and not through short-term borrowing, which is going to be a little more expensive.
Excellent. Entertain a motion to refer to the Budget, Finance, and Finance Committee.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Colm Botes?
Yeah.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Just, I guess, point of oil with Attorney Rollins, another roll call vote to move to citizens' comments beyond 10. Is that my understanding? Are we good?
Can you hear me? Yes. You have to take another roll call vote. That is correct.
Entertain a motion to continue.
Don't move.
Don't move.
Okay, see, for a second, I'm sure there's no discussion. Move to a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colm Botes?
Yeah.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Excellent. Moving on to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens here that would still comment at all? I see maybe Rebecca? Ms. Cudero?
Yes, Rebecca Fleisch-Cudero, Deerfield Drive. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I just wanted to reference a little bit tonight's survey on the analysis on bias and discrimination. And I did want to shout out a thank you to Dr. Solomon and Dr. Taylor Hall for their clear, precise, concise presentation. They made mention of creating a more equitable and inclusive community in the actions of community political, civic, and economic leaders in positions of authority to make a difference. And around the town's action to make Juneteenth a town holiday, I just wanted to say that's one small step in that area. To the survey point, and it was on the slide, working together for a racial and socially just community, and the reference to BCCR and DICE being ready to work with the community to improve racial and social justice experiences for our residents. This is why BCCR and the Universalist Unitarian Church in Bridgewater are co-hosting with DICE support, the First Annual Bridgewater Juneteenth Celebration on Saturday, June 19. We're happy the Bridgewater Town Councillors and Town Manager are aligned with our goal to recognize the importance of Juneteenth. The resolution that y'all wrote makes a reference to the late 20th century focus on African-American freedom and art, and I would say a belated focus at that, and acknowledges those who had been enslaved. This is what our Juneteenth celebration is all about, with planned speakers who will be sharing their lived Juneteenth experiences and their knowledge of that history, along with a look at Bridgewater's history of anti-slavery and enslavement. And we're going to have to that same theme, story hours presented by our library trustees, books that are going to be loaned through the Bridgewater State University Library, musical performances by a gospel choir, and others. So, in ending, with regard to the town council's nine-to-nothing vote on yesterday's flag raising, and tonight's nine-to-nothing vote on the Juneteenth holiday, and the nine-to-nothing vote recommending funding in support of the DEI Committee and the upcoming Juneteenth celebration, I'd like to take a James Baldwin quote out of context. And nobody knows my name. Mr. Baldwin said, quote, "Children have never been very good at listening to their elders, but they fail to imitate them." Mr. Baldwin was actually lamenting the conditions in the inner city, but in this case, I'd like to turn that quote around. We can tell our children repeatedly to listen to what we say about how to behave toward others. Listen to us when we say, "Be kind, be courteous, be inclusive," but they may not listen to us, their elders. But if we begin to act this way ourselves, we can hope that Mr. Baldwin's words are correct, that our children will never fail to imitate us. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Is there any other citizens for citizens' comments that wish to speak? Ms. Domingo?
I'm Beryl Domingo, South Drive, and I compare wholeheartedly with Ms. Rebecca Fleisch-Cudero's sentiments and statements. My statement is simply just to talk about Juneteenth. But personally, I am a member of BCCR, and I'm on the committee that is planning the first annual Juneteenth Celebration in Bridgewater. And I'm excited about that prospect. I want to thank you for your unanimous vote this evening to designate Juneteenth as a town holiday for Bridgewater. And I know the town employees are looking forward to having a half-day off the day before, the 19th of June, after this vote. It is really encouraging to see the kind of recognition for Juneteenth. As the resolution stated, it is a holiday celebrating the emancipation of those who had been enslaved in the U.S. I would like to point out that this date in 1865 was the first time that everyone living in the United States was free, was free. That's tremendous. And this is why this date is also known as Freedom Day, honoring the end of slavery. Juneteenth is an American celebration. It's an American holiday, just like July 4. The planning committee, as Ms. Rebecca Fleisch-Cudero pointed out, is working hard, with a lot of support from town officials, to bring to you a great event, a family event, a celebration, a fun event, a day that we want to repeat each year. So because it's going to be a fun holiday, we thank you for helping to make this a celebration and to make this happening. And we hope to see you. I know some of you have graduations to go to, but we hope to see those who can make it on June 19th at Stanley Ironworks Park. It's going to be great. But thank you so much for your support. This is going to go far. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, do you see anyone else?
Yes, Jenny Hansen.
Oh, okay, Ms. Hansen, go ahead.
Hi, thanks for staying past 10. I just have one question. I have a question and a statement. The question, I know you can't answer, but maybe somebody can send me an email or something. I missed, I might have missed it at the beginning when they were talking about the survey, but I was curious as to what population or where that survey was taken, because I personally had never heard of it. So I didn't know, you know, what population they targeted. And I also agreed with one of the councillors, and I apologize, I can't remember who, would like mention, he would like to see it, if they do it again, have it as a larger population. So I just wanted to make that comment. The other is, I am, I'm speaking as a resident, not a member of the Charter Committee. And this is just a comment I was responding to Mary Lee Hunt. And this is just a comment I was responding to Mary Lee Hunt. I like the idea as a resident to possibly changing the charter to eliminate the actual number of district and precincts specified in the charter. And that would save the town from having to change the charter every time that that potentially could happen. And she mentioned that it could be reflected in the administration code, which would be easier to do. So I just wanted to say that I think that that's, as a resident, I think that's a good idea, would save a lot of work if that had to be changed every time the situation changed. So I just wanted to put my two cents in on that. And I thank you again for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you. You as well. Any other citizens for citizens' comments? Josh, do you see anyone? I do not see anyone.
I do not see anyone either.
Okay, I guess I'll entertain a motion to continue to council comments.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'll move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yeah.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Okay, I'll move. Council George, for yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just a couple things. First, I wasn't able to attend the flag raising, but from what I gather, I appreciate the councils that were there. It was a great day, weather-wise, event-wise. So I'm very, very happy to see the turnout from there as well. So that was great. I just want to put out to people that the July Fourth Committee is up and running. Bridgewater, I think, is going to be one of the very few communities that's actually going to have a public celebration of the Fourth of July, which I think is a testament to the town, the committee. And I just want to remind people that the Fourth of July, the parade, the fireworks, is all done by fundraising and private donations. The town does not subsidize the Fourth of July whatsoever. So in a very short period of time, the committee has to raise a significant amount of funds. So please, reach out to the committee through Facebook. They've got fundraisers. It is a great time. This is probably going to be probably one of the largest ones because of the very limited amount of towns to be able to participate. So I just can't stress enough for the people that work on it, can't thank them enough. And hopefully, people will just reach into their pockets real deep to help offset the costs from that as well. The last thing I just want to touch upon is the vote on the resolution. I just want to be clear that just because the resolution did not pass does not mean it voids the vote. It, you know, as Counselor Gallagher brought up, very strange to have a resolution verifying a vote. A vote's a vote. But I just want to be overt where I've stood for the last two and a half years, that if the council considers zoning for recreational marijuana, the only way I will support it is through a town-wide vote. I think it was very easy to walk into the polls on a non-binding question and cast your vote. But with the process being zoning, that zoning could turn out to be across the entire town, depending on where it goes. And I think people taking the time to educate themselves on the pluses, the minuses, as well as where shops could be, may not change their vote, or may change their vote. So, you know, I just want that to be understood. And I've said that two and a half years ago. And my personal opinion is, if we had gone the route of a public vote, we probably wouldn't be sitting here debating this again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel George. Counsel Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to recognize the Veterans Council, the FFW, the American Legion, and all those that put on the Memorial Day services on Memorial Day. It's great to see that we have this event, this event, this recognition back after one-year hiatus. Hopefully, next year, we get more of the public involved, so we can have a larger event like we used to. But it's good to see that things are getting back to normal. I appreciate those that came to my coffee with the counselor, which is back quarterly now. I had some good conversations with a few residents. Counselor Wood even stopped by, and I think I even left him there, because I had to go home. So he was talking to someone else, and I said, I gotta go. But thank, thank those that came by. It was great to be in the, at the event yesterday to recognize Gay Pride Month and raise the pride, gay pride flag in the center of our town yesterday. It was such a spirited, well-run event with a lot of our citizens in attendance. I want to remind everyone, we need some volunteers. Saturday, nine to noon, down at the Town River Landing, we'll be gathering for an annual spring cleanup, so our town will look really great for our Fourth of July events and other events this summer. So if you have time, please come down, spend about an hour, go to an area, clean it up. We'll assign areas as well. I hope some of my counselors can join me. I'll be at the Juneteenth event on June nineteenth to give some remarks, as has been noted. And as Counselor George said, the Fourth of July fundraising is crucial that we donate whatever we can to help the Fourth of July. I believe there's an event Thursday night at Black Hat. Do you have a chance to get down there? Three to eight P.M., and that's it.
Thank you. Counsel Gallagher, Counsel Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just to echo the sentiments that Mr. Gallagher just spoke, I want to thank all those responsible for putting together the Memorial Day celebration on the common. As it was lightly attended, it's certainly a post-COVID situation where we're not all back to quite normal yet, but hopefully it's a step in the right direction. And next year's event will hopefully bring a lot more people on out. But I do want to thank all the organizers, and certainly all the veterans out there for their service. And then secondly, I definitely want to congratulate all of the senior graduates of Bridgewater Rainham, class of twenty-twenty-one, from this past weekend's graduation on Saturday morning, including my own son, who, who all, all seniors and all students across the board, especially the seniors, had a very tough year, not the most ideal senior year by any stretch. But, but they did get to have a senior prom. They did get to have some sports. They definitely got to have more things this year than they got to have last year. So I'm very happy for all the celebrations and events that they could have this year. I want to wish all of the individual graduates much success in their future endeavors, whether it be college, or during the service, or during the workforce. They're all a special group of kids, and I want to wish them all the best, including my own son Kyle. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Perry. Counsel Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to just comment that I think that the attendance, the turnout for the flag raising conducted this week was very gratifying. I thought it was a tremendous tribute to, to the town, and of course, as well to Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights, who have worked very hard to make that event happen. And I was very pleased to see it work out as, very nicely as it did. And I was happy today to drive by Town Hall and to, and to see the pride flag aloft. Just on the, on the subject of flags, it's, I think, appropriate to mention that upcoming next week, on June fourteenth, is Flag Day. And we certainly pay tribute to our national flag as well. And I think that it's appropriate on that day for us to acknowledge that appropriately with a flag wherever we deem appropriate. So that's something to look forward to as well. And of course, the June nineteenth holiday now, and celebration that has been planned once again by Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights. I will be in attendance, along with Counselor Gallagher. I believe that other councilors will. I would urge all the councilors to attend that event. It certainly sounds it will be a very enjoyable celebration. And again, I think that the work that's been put into the organization of it has been truly impressive and is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Chase and Counsel Souza.
I attended Flag Day. I attended a Vets Day. But we have to always remember, it's the sacrifices that the veterans have made that made Flag Day possible. We have our freedom, and we have our rights of choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Souza. Counsel Moore?
I also was able to attend the Memorial Day celebration. I thought it was great, and wanted to thank everyone for putting on that event. I wasn't able to attend the pride flag ceremony yesterday. Unfortunately, I had a work conflict, but I was able to go by later with my daughter. And it was amazing to see. So I did want to just thank everyone involved with that again. Councilors Rushton, Gallagher, Chase, your work to try to push that forward was admirable. And also the community members, obviously, who supported that. It was great to see. I think this was a great week for Bridgewater. And I hope to see many more. Thanks.
Counsel Moore? Counsel Wood?
Thank you. Yeah, I too had a conflict yesterday, so I couldn't attend the ceremony. But it's a great thing. As I said during my comments a few weeks ago, the embassy, the U.S. Embassies around the world have permission to fly the flag to show the world, you know, how America stands for everyone. And so I'm glad that Bridgewater can do the same. I also want to echo the same comments of people here two, maybe three or four times. The Fourth of July events are not town-funded. They are fundraiser-funded. You will see, if you go to Facebook, you will see a number of posts on how to make donations. If you enjoy the fireworks and enjoy all the festivities around that, it doesn't run on your tax dollar, it runs on your donation. So please go out and do that. You know, last comments, I'm a little bit disappointed in the resolution outcome, but you know, we'll get by that. Bridgewater's changed their mind, but you're hearing from the same half dozen people. And, you know, we need to find a way to change that, so that everyone is aware of the, the actual opinion. Now, if we say that the poll, that the vote isn't enough, you know, then why aren't any of us sitting here? Because several of us got elected with under a hundred votes. That is enough. But anyway, some statistics, because I'm a numbers guy, daily sales are now at three-point-seven, three-point-eight million dollars in retail. Annual sales are approaching one-point-four billion dollars in Massachusetts. There are now a hundred and sixty-one communities that have some form of retail or medical. There are a hundred and twenty-six retail communities with final or in progress. That's, you know, the, the, some form of retail is higher than the number of communities that adopted plastic bag bands. So, so the whole, the whole state has moved forward. The, the U.S. is moving forward. You know, Bridgewater needs to move forward too. And we have an easy solution. And, you know, if it takes emails, then that's what it's going to take. So Bridgewater, reach out to your counselor. You voted yes to support, to support retail marijuana. So let your counselors know that that's your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wood. Counsel Colin Bodas?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Colin Bodas. I'll be brief, other than to say, being the president really stinks to go last, because many of you have already made great points that I'd like to make. The only thing that I would add is, you know, to Counselor Perry's comments, you know, really, the class of twenty-twenty-one graduated, you know, they've had a really difficult year. I wish them all the best as they head off to whatever they're going to do, whether it's the military college or entering the workforce. And I'd just add one other quick comment, just related to the pride flag raising. I had the opportunity to be there, of course, but, you know, if you have a minute to watch the testimonials of some of the attendees that were there, it really gives you a sense of how important and impactful a simple raising of a flag was to our community, especially members of the LGBTQ plus community. Certain, as, certainly as an ally, it was nice to hear those stories and how impactful they were. So if you have a minute, I would encourage other members of the council to just watch that on YouTube or wherever it's presented. And with that, that's the only comments I have. Certainly, there's no executive session, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I'll move to a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yeah.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Have a great week.
Good night, all.
Good night.